All right, you ready? Good evening, welcome to school committee for March 10th, 2014, starting a few minutes late, 7:35 this evening. We're coming to you live, so for those of you watching at home, good evening. We'll start the agenda with the approval of minutes from the February 24th session. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make a motion for approval of the February 24th, 2014 minutes.
Second? Are there any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have student communications this evening. James is joining us.
I have a bit to talk about. Last week, 11 students, juniors and seniors, went to MASC, which is the Massachusetts Association of Student Council Leadership Conference, along with Ms. Perkins. And so we were there Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and so we had a bunch of workshops, couple of speakers, and one of them was John Bead. He climbed Everest, and in one of his workshops, he had like the seven steps to learn how to be liked when you first meet someone, so I can tell you those seven steps. First one is to smile. Some of them are going to sound weird before I explain it.
I'm coming out now.
The second one is to touch them in an unusual way, so like if you shake hands, like you grab like their arm, or like pat their back, or shoulder, or something, then you want to compliment or encourage them. And then you want to talk about them behind their backs, like positively. Remember their names, mirror them, and be quiet and listen. And then the other speaker, Bill Cordes, talked about his 4-2 principle, which was like how people will remember you for what you've done for them, or people remember you for what they did to you. So that was those two. Then the dance team won the splinter slash the trash. There's a talent expo next week, March 18th, I believe, and it's a Beatles-themed chorus concert. The Drama Guild has a performance on Saturday at 1:30 at Westfield High. Spring sport meeting is tonight, MCAS next week, English. Then the week of March 24th to 28th is Green Week, and Monday is Meatless Monday. And according to the Union of Concerned Scientists, eating meat is the second biggest environmental hazard facing the world today. So students who go meatless at lunch will be entered into a raffle to win a free pizza, meatless of course, donated by Peel Pizza. Tuesday is Treeless Tuesday, so we will encourage students to, or people to use less paper on their, in their everyday lives. Many teachers will plan lessons that do not require paper. The same day, meteorologist Michael Page, he was from class of 2009, will return to Hingham to give two presentations about climate change and its impact on weather. Wednesday is Waste Not Wednesday, raise awareness about water conservation, and students will be given a short quiz on water conservation, and students who hand in the quiz will be entered into a lottery for a party for a group of friends at a local restaurant. And then renowned storyteller J. O. Callahan will perform an environmentally themed story, the story of Great Oak, to a large student audience. And it was, the performance was made possible by the generous grant from Aquariation Water Company. Thursday is Switch Off Thursday. The lights will be off in the school. Teachers who turn the classroom lights off, plan lessons that do not require electricity will get a free cup of Starbucks coffee, and will also be entered to win a gift basket from Red Eye Roasters. Friday is Fossil Free Friday, so encourage students to bike or walk to school, or carpool. And whoever carpool with three or four students will be able to park in the closed parking And then they will receive a gift certificate from Nona's. People who ride buses will also be given a free ice cream. And Friday, students will help build raised garden beds in the courtyard, and then the frames are made from reclaimed lumber that will be filled with homemade school compost generated at the cafeteria. Then along, same that, during that week, the group, a Japanese basketball team is, baseball, is coming to just like-
Have an exchange program.
Yes, have an exchange program for a week. This Friday, there's a Best Buddies Bowling Party, and then the lip sync is next, is on the 27th. And then Molly Hagerty, is senior, is for her capstone. She's working with Raised to Nowhere. It's about teenage suicide, and there's going to be a showing and discussion of a movie on the 25th. And she has also talked with students at the high school, and like has like video of them, like to their responses of the video and what they feel about that. So that's all I have for tonight.
Pretty busy.
Yes.
Any questions for James? Thank you.
Thanks, James.
Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Other communications?
I have one communication that-
Sorry, James. Footnote.
Footnote.
At the conference, the Hingham High School Student Council won bronze for like their Council of Excellence, I think, so it's like a bronze medal. So, good job to students council.
Very good. Thank you, James.
Well, you know, I often share in the FYI part of your packet communications that we get from, from parents or other community members who are often are complimenting our teachers and our students. And there's one in your packet that I thought was particularly nice effort because it came from a grandfather, who happened to accompany our, our students, nine students who went on a recent trip to Ireland and Scotland. And, and I put it in here because you really, not only is complimenting the, the chaperones, the teachers, but, but also the behavior of the kids, and how tremendously well behaved they were, and we always like to hear that. And I think the public should hear that more often, and that's why I'm mentioning it tonight. So, it's a letter from, um-
Dale?
Tyler Anderson's granddad.
Dale, and his name is Dale Anderson, I believe.
Dale Anderson, okay.
Yeah, it's his dad's father, I think. I think it's his father's father. Scott is his dad.
So anyway, it's just a nice, nice note, and it's-
Great.
It's very nice when people take the time to do that.
It is.
No, it's tremendous. Tyler Anderson actually is on the tech squad. You remember when we were at high school in December at that presentation? That's, that's a very nice, it's, you often get letters about bad stuff, complaints. It's really nice to get those, so thank you for mentioning that, really appreciated that.
Yeah.
And, and to, to everyone out there, if you have something nice you'd like to say or add, please, send it in. We like to get good reviews and good news. Liza, did you want to mention something?
Yes, I did. Wanted to preview a little news that will come in Sunday's paper, but that we've already shared with the students. Kate McDonough, who's the coach of the swim team, is being named the Division Two Boys' Swim Coach of the Year. And she's been a coach for eight years. For a team that doesn't practice or compete in Hingham, they practice in Waymouth and can have their home meets in Quincy, the team is also, it's open to all athletic abilities. There's no cuts, so similar to the track team. And 80% of them are on the honor roll this year. But she's coached for eight years, started out as an assistant, and she's not a teacher either in town. And so, thank you to John Hancock for giving her flex time to support her passion, and she's been a great influence on the kids of seeing how their passion can continue in life after having a professional career. And so, thank you to Kate, and we should all be honored of having, we don't get those very often, the Coach of the Year, so.
That's great.
That's terrific. Congratulations to her and terrific program as well. Thank you, Liza.
Thank you.
Questions and comments from the audience? Anything not on the agenda, something that came to you at lunchtime? Nothing, okay? Superintendent's report?
I want to mention a couple of things. One is, there were some articles in the press last week about the redesign of the SAT, and I'm not going to read the entire article, it was an excellent article, that is in the packet that we left for you tonight. And attached to the article is a very nice chart that came from Education Week that does a comparison, much better way to get all that information than reading the full text, between the current SAT and the redesigned SAT. And then an article about the, the press release and the speech of College Board President David Coleman. And David Coleman is someone who was involved in the writing of the Common Core. He's only been the president of the College Board since 2012. However, there is not any sort of reference in, in the literature or the chart to the Common Core, although there are people who have read of the new changes and say they see some inkling of a connection there, but he did not express that at all. So, that's there for your future reading. There's also an article that we liked especially, Ellen found it. It's an article that talks about some recent research about the responsive classroom. And we've always seen the responsive classroom as a way to teach some social skills and allow kids to bond together and develop good work habits and learning habits and social habits. But this is actually an article that talks about some research that shows that students who are educated in that kind of environment actually make some academic changes as well. So you have that article. And then lastly, in our ongoing effort to make you a little more aware of what's happening with the park testing, we have another sample question for park, and it's grade four math this time. So on the one side is a problem, happens to be about fractions, everyone's favorite subject, and then the scoring rubric is on the other side, but obviously you're going to try it without looking at the scoring rubric, so.
I felt so good I forgot the third grade question right there. I'm afraid to take the fourth grade question.
So, we'll continue to ship some of these to you. And I, I'll mention that I sent next to newsletter last night, and in it, I referred to the fact that we have 273 students in all who will be participating in the, in the trial or field test that will occur later. The middle school group will begin with their testing at the end of this month, and then the other testing will happen between, I think it's May 6th and June 5th, thereabouts. About 270 students, and they are from East School, grade three, middle school, grade six and eight, and the high school, grade nine, ELA, and Altra Two.
In Altra Two.
So, a specific letter will go home to the parents whose children were randomly selected, and we hope that we will learn from this. I say in my letter to the parents that, you know, it's the, good and bad, there's always good in learning things from a trial, but it does mean that those students will also be doing MCAS. And in the case of the eighth grade students who are in the math field test, they are doing both an end of the year test and a performance-based test, so they are doing double testing in addition to the MCAS. So, so we're being good soldiers by participating in this test. We weren't given a lot of choice about that, actually, but we hope to learn a lot, and we still are concerned, and I'm sure parents are concerned too, about the impact on construction plan.
And what is that testing again?
Well, it's at different times. The middle school testing is at the end of this month, at the end of March, and then there's a break because we have MCAS in between. And we pick then, we pick up the East School and the high school testing later in May.
Thank you. Unfinished business. So the bullying policy that we reviewed at the last meeting, I don't believe that there were any comments or questions submitted.
No.
So tonight's the night of action, correct?
Yep. Do you want me to make the motion?
Yeah, please, Andy.
So, yes, so we did not get any, did not get any comments. It's pretty straightforward, but we would like, I'd like to make a motion, everyone sees in front of you, that we approve the amended policy for employee conduct with regards to bullying to students and the procedure. So that would be the, it goes into 2.3, and the procedure is-
2.3B.
2.3B, thank you.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I probably should say again this week, in case people weren't listening the last time, that while we are just catching up with the paperwork, and we'll have to make similar changes in our handbooks this spring, obviously, the implementation of this new policy for adults went into effect at the time that it was adopted last spring, so that was immediate, and this is a, a paperwork. So we've been working under these guidelines, but now they're in our manual and will be in the handbooks that are updated every year in this late spring.
Terrific. Andy, Andy?
Just one other thing. We didn't have to put this in because we have a situation in Hingham.
Right.
It is more our legislators who have asked us to include it, so we don't have a problem with our employees.
Right. Well, it, it actually makes sense because I think it's a practice that's been in place, there just wasn't an official policy that-
Correct.
-that was in line with that.
But I don't want people to think that we put this in-
Because the law, right, the law has already been in effect, so in fact, we just had to adopt an official policy to comply with the law. So, great. Okay. Moving on to new business. Impeccable timing, gentlemen, our legislative team, Senator Bob Headland, Representative Garrett Bradley, Representative Jamie Murphy, thanks for joining us this evening. We'd love to hear from you. I know you were with the selectmen last week, hear an update about what's going on at the Hill, new legislation, pending legislation. And I think I forwarded some, some-
Yeah, you sent some questions.
Some comments earlier today that maybe you had an opportunity to take a look at because I know they're of interest to some of our, our members.
Yeah, I did, Mr. Jim. And one of the things I would like to point out, Senator Headland and Jamie and I have been doing this within our communities, and tonight it's age before beauty tonight, so it's Senator Headland's up first. Drawers in the parking lot.
And I was not at the selectmen's meeting, as we were doing the transportation bond bill with 240 amendments, and it went into the evening. I'll be visiting them a little later. You want to start?
Right, that's good.
Take care of them.
Yep, of course. Michael, stand up and send it through to him all at once. I, um, this is what I was going to present to the, to the selectmen the other night, so you're actually ahead of the curve on them, and welcome our members that I haven't seen here since our last visit. It was hallucinating, I thought I was in a constitutional convention, looking at a former colleague of mine from the House who has joined the board. Garrett told me that I was too long in my presentation in Hull, and I was too negative, so.
We're always negative.
I'll try to shorten it, I'll try to shorten it, but if you look at some of the local aid information I'm going to give you, it's hard to put, present too rosy of a picture.
Jamie, you getting used to the Laurel and Hardy routine that he's-
We do the same thing in Waymouth.
Jamie doesn't interrupt me, though.
I've spent 14 years with them now, actually Garrett and, we've all spent 14 years together, so we're used to each other by now.
The first page that I provide you, just a quick reference point in where we are with House One, Governor Patrick's proposed local aid under Chapter 70. As you know, it's a starting point with the submission of House One. House will commence their budget deliberations when?
May, April 28th.
April 28th. We'll take it up preceding, the week preceding Memorial Day. And hopefully, we have a budget in place in a timely fashion, and sent to the governor, which is our statutory responsibility before July 1st. So, and we do not have currently a early local aid resolution. I had a discussion today with the Senate Chair of Ways and Means about that, they're hoping they will do something, but obviously, our definition of early for early local aid resolution is by now, and that hasn't happened. We have reached a budget consensus number, but we don't have a, a local aid resolution number. The, as you can see from the governor's proposal, it's a, it's a very modest increase of 2% would translate to the town of Hingham. And I think Garrett will characterize, and Jamie will characterize what they think will happen in the House. It has been the tradition in recent years where we have a, when we have a revenue situation like we have, the Senate has generally come in a little bit higher than the governor and higher than the House. That's partly a function of the fact that we come later in the process, we have a clearer revenue picture at that point. The unrestricted account, which as you know is the merger of the former lottery account and the additional assistance account, and they do, and it was a good reform because it made the situation more equitable, as many communities did not receive additional assistance. We see level funded under the governor's proposal, and I would point out that we have a supplemental budget pending. The House has passed their version, Senate its version, in the current fiscal year that we're in. It's before a conference committee. When we had debate in the Senate on that, based on testimony, that the state treasurer offered to the revenue committee, and he indicated that he has a surplus right now of $20 million in additional lottery revenues that have come in over their benchmark and over what we had anticipated. I offered the amendment to see that that $20 million goes back to communities in the form of unrestricted local aid. That was defeated. The argument on the other side was that we will deal with that in the 2015 budget. So we shall see on that point. The next page is just kind of a quick overview on what has happened in the last five-year snapshot overall with the different local aid accounts and grant accounts. And this is the, this is the part where, I guess, makes me a little bit jaded and negative in my presentation to you, but that's the five-year trend, and the next page is the trend line, and as a result specifically to Hingham, and you can see that's a downward trend line in that assistance from the state. The next page, I'll just quickly go over that, talks about the fact that we have had in the last five years over $5 billion in, in new revenues, yet the local aid picture has diminished overall, down about $42 million. So that's why, I guess the presentation is a little bit negative. So I tried to work in some good news, which is on the next page, where we talk about the good news for Hingham, the school safety grant that was a House initiative, that I know when I, I believe I popped in on the superintendent unannounced one day when we were discussing particulars of that with the police department, and some of the other grants that have been provided to Hingham. I know that roads are not the purview of the school department, but obviously, the overall state aid picture to Hingham impacts your budgeting, and obviously, if the state is more generous, it provides some flexibility at town meeting, obviously, for the school budget. And that's why these numbers are important. The Chapter 90 funds were at an all-time high in terms of sending money back to communities through Chapter 90. We've appropriated $200 million in Chapter 90 funds. The legislature has actually authorized $300 million, which would, is a significant, significant ramp up. The governor has chosen not to release that additional $100 million, as he's basically prioritized some of the transportation bonding for other areas. If you look at his recently released transportation plan, the priorities kind of move us in another direction than that Chapter 90 account, which I don't agree with. I think we should release that $100 million, and I think the House has gone on record calling on that, too. This is just some personal stuff I've worked on for your perusal. The only thing I'll highlight out of that is the school building assistance program. I know you know the history. Garrett and I were very involved in that from the start, along with then Representative Heinz from Marshfield. We visited the Department of Education early on, I've been mauled into testify in getting that off of a year-to-year appropriation at the time that the list was frozen, and I know that that impacted Hingham greatly at that time. We then filed legislation to move it off the state budget, have it bonded the way we do other capital projects. The Romney administration then later put together their reform of that program, and basically, that, that's how the process got started. The legislature picked up from there and did a comprehensive bill, and we're at the 10th anniversary of that, and I know that, I think Hingham has benefited about $45 million. So that's the recap. I hope I was short enough for my colleagues. Maybe they'll see me more time later, and I'll spot it off, but I'm sure you have some, some questions, look forward to those.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Just to follow up on what Bob said, just to go over a couple of numbers, I'll let Representative Murphy weigh in, and then again, happy to take any questions. And Ray, do you want me to address your questions now, and some of your questions in my comments because I do have some notes on-
Yeah, why don't you?
Sure. First of all, the, the budget released by the governor was $36.4 billion, which was a 4.9% increase over last year's budget, which is about average on the increase in budgets. One of the things you have to remember, we have significant increase in healthcare costs, especially with the implementation of the ACA, as well as generally about a 5% increase in contracts across the board, as well as healthcare costs and pension liability. So, the budget tends to go up every year, although a lot of times, we are not making new investments, we're just trying to keep, trying to keep pace with inflation and contractual obligations. In the revenue, this particular year is up about one, about a 1.2, excuse me, about 1.1 billion over what we anticipated bringing in, of which is obviously a good, which is obviously a good thing. The House in particular is going to make two particular initiatives. One is a substantial contribution to our rainy day account, which is at 1.2 billion, but it was over $3 billion at the height of the recession. That plus during the recession, what we did is one of the, quite frankly, fiscal gimmicks that we use, to have a balanced budget is we extend the pension schedule up, which is not good planning, and the bonding, it makes all the bonding agencies extremely nervous. So we're going to make a substantial contribution in the House budget to reduce that down about three years. Those two things, although not, you know, headline grabbers, and for all of you who know, understand how important bond ratings are and short-term interest rate, and the interest rates that they yield because of that, keeping our bond rating at the state where it is is critically important and saves the taxpayers millions of dollars every year. Because as you know, as, when we send you your, we don't send you a check for local aid, we send it quarterly, and we short-term borrow for that, and then backfill with the collection of taxes. So, that, that is something that we, we cherish, the, I know that the treasurer has done a very good job on making sure that the bonding agencies, bonding agencies have understood that, and the rating agencies have understood that. So on, on the House side, the governor's budget was level funding on local aid, the Speaker is on record in indicating the House is going to do better than that. I would, it's hard to put a number on it. I've been telling folks that I would anticipate about a 5% increase. Again, this is all in flux. We'll do our budget April 28th, Senate will do it, and then we'll get in, in May, and then we'll get into the final stages of that in June. The session ends July 31st, and occasionally, some of the issues in the budget are intertwined with other major pieces of legislation, so I wouldn't be surprised if you saw a little bit of that lag, potentially some of the vetoes before everything's tightened up at the end of July when the session, the official session ends. I also included in my notes, I sent along a DPH alert relative to opiate abuse, and what some steps, action steps communities can take. If you're reading the ledger, you probably have seen some of the significant overdoses we've seen on the South Shore. Some of the, just a couple of notes on, that I have on some of the questions that Ray had sent along in regards to sped costs. That's a priority of mine, as it is every year. There's everything, there's legislation filed to do everything from increase it to 100% to increase the reimbursement age to transportation cost. Those bills will continue to move through the legislative process. On the budget side, my goal is to make sure that the 75% reimbursement, which you're accustomed to and used to, is actually there, to make sure there's enough money to meet that goal, which is always a moving target, as you know. So that's a priority of mine on the House side. There is a bill, House 1862, which I'm a co-sponsor of, that's in House Third Reading, which is the last step before final passage to the Senate, which is a local option bill would allow communities, if accepted by the school committee and town meeting, to provide an establishment of a stabilization reserve fund, locally reserved fund for unanticipated, unbudgeted special education costs or transportation costs. One of the other questions, I think we started, I think we were talking about it when I came in, is the, the park initiative, and whether or not we're going to see some glitches and how that's implemented. For the, for the record, Bob Bickerton is the Senior Associate Commissioner for Assessment and Learning. He's the go-to person at DOE on all of these issues, on this pilot program. He said that, and I'm just looking at my note, DOE is working closely with the testing vendor, Piercing Company, to reduce any possible glitches in online, on the online testing. From someone who sits with my son on occasion and does homework on the study island, I understand when there goes a glitch in that system, how frustrating that can be. He also said that DOE is, is also shadowing them in work, and on a parallel level, to make sure that they're providing technical supports for school districts. So if there's any issues here locally, get in touch with my office, we've already talked to them, we'll be able to reach out to them very quickly. You've talked about in the past, we've talked about here, unfunded mandates, which I know is an issue for every community. It's an issue that, if you look at the number of bills that are filed to try to address that issue, that it, we, we understand it, we try to balance the local aid that we send with the mandates that we put on you, and make sure that they're equal, they're not always equal. We understand that. There is a bill that the Rep. Pisser's working on right now that actually was- There is a bill that Rep. Pischer's working on right now that actually was reported favorable. It's House 3722. It's currently in Ways and Means. And it's an educational mandated task force of 11 members to identify and review state laws and regulations, mandating applying for school districts. It's sort of a compilation of all the different study bills that were out there. And Alice really has a handle on this as the Chairwoman of Education, and that is what she sees as the vehicle to try to get at the heart of this, which is going to be a moving target. There are going to be years where it's better, and there's going to be years where it's worse. We're here for your input on that. Jamie speaking. If I missed anything, I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, Garrett.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jamie Murphy. It's my first time appearing before all of you and joining my colleagues here. I've been in office for seven terms, as has Garrett. So it's 14 years. And Garrett and I actually went to high school together a long time ago. He's actually younger than me, although he looks a lot older. He's actually younger, one year behind me. But it's great to be here. And as you know, every 10 years, we redistrict. And Precinct 2 in Hingham was added to my district. So now I represent part of Hingham. So like most communities, most communities share more than one rep in shared districts. So I now represent Waymouth, along with Senator Headland and Garrett, which is actually good, because I think the strength in numbers when it comes down to the political process. We've all worked well together for a long time, and it's great to be here in Hingham. But in regard to the budget processes, Garrett had said, the governor had filed his budget, and that really starts the ball rolling. So as we go forward in the process, Garrett and I, on the House side, along with Senator Headland, we'll all work together to make sure we get as much local aid as possible. We're right now in the process of devising the House budget. And what happens is, we make appointments with the Chair of Ways and Means, along with the Ways and Means staff, and those meetings are coming up. And we'll be advocating for Hingham during those meetings. And as the budget process moves forward, when you look at the numbers, we put some numbers quickly together for you. The governor's budget proposes an increase in Chapter 70 funding, and that amounts to about $6.5 million for Hingham. And in regard to the unrestricted general government aid, it's $1.366 million. So we're here just to tell you that we're going to do as much as we can to bring those numbers up. We have talked to the Speaker of the House, and he has made statements to us and has also made public statements that he hopes to do better than the governor's budget in regard to local aid. Our goal as officials is always to bring as much local aid to the community as possible. So that's what our next goal is here in regard to the process. As we get through the process, please stay in touch with myself and Garrett. On the House side, we'll be doing the budget first. The Senate always gets to see what we do, just the process. So whatever we don't do in the House, you can reach out to Senator Headland, and we can reach out to our friends in the Senate to provide any type of assistance for Hingham that we can. So but today's my first appearance before you. I appeared before the Selectman last week. It was a great meeting. It's great representing Hingham in the legislature, and I want to thank you all for having me here tonight.
Thank you, Jamie. Garrett, if I could just follow up, I'll start the questioning. So House 1862. So I think you're aware and mentioned that we had a special education funding working group that was formed about two years ago, following a year where we had, you know, over $500,000 of unexpected added district tuitions for special education students who had moved into town kind of late in our budget process. It was about mid to third week in January at the time. So that group has worked and to a point where there's a piece of legislation that is going before town meeting as a warrant article, that it's gotten broad support among the voting boards. And just with respect to the third reading of the bill that's pending in the legislature, when it gets that far, it's obviously a little bit more likely that it'll move forward. Kind of what's the process at that point and the timing and—
Well, timing, yeah. I've done predicting timing in the legislature. What I could tell you is that it's been reported out favorably by the committee, which is obviously the critical step. It's gone to steering of policy, went through there, was read second and put into third. It'll come out of third eventually. I mean, I think it'll move rather quickly, but it's one of those things that it's very hard to predict. There's been requests made to move it as quickly as possible. Occasionally, there are certain members that may have issues with it. I think those things are pretty much worked out now. After that, it will go to the Senate, most likely go to Senate Steering of Policy, since it's a local option. It's not something that weighs and means, but after review, it doesn't involve any state dollars. They will send it to third, pass it there, back to the House for an acron, back to the Senate for an acron, and then off to the governor, who has 10 days to sign a veto. And it also doesn't need a roll call, so this is something that we can do and keep moving through the process when we're not in formal session. So now that it's in third, I like its chances in getting to the Senate. And given that it's local option, I think it's something that has a strong likelihood of passing before we adjourn.
That's great. That's good news. Any other questions that anyone else has? Was there anything that I didn't—yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to thank you for all you've done for Hingham for special ed and also for what you do for the 4th grade at East School. I had the privilege of going on the field trip, and you both hosted the kids in your own respective houses and came to visit the school on a regular basis. And the kids really appreciate that. It's very impactful for them and their parents. And I appreciate your personal attention to the kids and you doing it yourselves and not just the staffer giving the tour. So it shows them what our local government's all about.
I think it's great. I think it's great that it's actually—I mean, let me—listen, I don't think it's any secret. If you go up there the second or third week in June, there were school buses down the hill, because everybody's done with the lesson plans, looking for stuff to do. In the snow days, we get more school, more school. But that's actually incorporated into the class and having us come to the class first, talk about what we do, and then having them come up and see it, I think is a really great program. And just a note for the folks here, whether you are for or against the middle school project, overall, the town did the right thing. I mean, if you look at the communities now, as we pull out of the recession, that are trying to chomp at the bit to get some of the funding, and we're going to be opening the building at the end of this year, or this fall, I think it's a testament. We had a very good, lively debate at town meeting. Folks got to hear all sides, and the community moved forward in a cooperative way. And at the end of the day, the taxpayers in the town are going to win when you look at how much money's come back now on the 10th anniversary of the changes to the school building program.
Regarding East School, this isn't hyperbole, but my last visit there with the 4th grade class was probably the best questioning I've ever received from any class at that grade level. Now, I learned later, they were briefed for a fair amount of time prior to my arrival, and they had the complete dossier on me, okay?
There may have been some—
Both personally and professionally, but it was a great group. In fact, we also had a few visitors last week that you're not even aware of from the middle school that were up there on their own volition. They were snooping around up there.
Anybody else? Dennis?
So Senator Headland, on your handout here, you did in 18 or 20-point type, talk about the items that were down. So I'm just—the implication to me is that you'd like to see those up. So you'd like to see increased funding in those areas?
Absolutely.
And where would the funding come from?
Well, we're all—in favor of everything on Beacon Hill. So you have to prioritize. The example I gave you on the transportation side, for instance, with the Chapter 90, we've made statements, we have all voted in favor of that $300 million, but at the same time, we've kind of left it in the lap of the administration by authorizing a lot more than they can actually fund. And I don't like to operate that way. I think that we have to have a step in, a significant say in prioritizing and not just authorize everything and then let the governor sort it out. I think we need to make those decisions. It's the same thing when we had debate on whether or not to give the governor expanded nine seat powers when we had the declining revenue situation. I voted against it. I thought we should be involved in the debate. One example, and I think I made it in my opening remarks, is the $20 million surplus that's sitting there in Lottery 8. The lottery was created in 1972 and billed to the residents and the taxpayers, the Commonwealth, that that money predominantly was to go to local aid. And I think that was a good example of prioritizing that money and having it come back in form of local aid. But in answer to your question, I think you're getting into a little ideological question about, well, where would I suggest savings? Do I kind of hear that?
Well, if you're going to fund additionally, having spent six years on advisory and a couple of years now on the school committee, I know that there's only two places to fund additional. It's either to get additional revenue or to cut costs or expenses in other areas.
We've had, obviously, we have debate on budget matters, and I think if you look at the roll calls and some of the analysis that's done by rating groups, there's an organization called Mass Fiscal Alliance that just released its ratings this week. And they're more fiscal conservative group. You know, I've received 100% ratings. So there's a lot of stuff I voted against and hoping to prioritize local aid, borne out in the votes.
I was waiting for the fraud, waste, and abuse line, but must be all that now. Anything else?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, all of you for coming.
Well, just as a follow-up to Garrett's comment about the middle school and the wise decision, if anyone in this room still has a doubt about that, or even at home, since we're live tonight, when we see Sue Kees' presentation on foreign language, she has some visuals of classes at the middle school. So if anyone has a doubt, when you look at those slides and you see the posts and the polls, that will reaffirm that it was a good decision there.
Actually, the middle schoolers that come up, they were lobbying us on us. Can't wait for the new school. They were 7th graders. We cannot wait for that to open up.
Well, I'll tell you that the Building Committee toured again last week, last Wednesday. Such a difference from—a few of us took a look at some things in January and then a larger group in November. And it's almost done. It's supposed to be substantially completed the end of March, and it's really remarkable. It's really going to be a terrific facility. And financially, I'm hoping to have an opportunity to go back to the Selectman maybe in April to talk about kind of the financial success that this is yielding, because, sure, a big expenditure for the town, but in partnership with the Commonwealth in the form of MSBA dollars, you know, a significant grant, $25 million or so in grant money from the state, and a net cost to Hingham, which has now decreased over the life of the project because of, you know, efficient design, the model school program, which no longer exists actually, and, you know, a favorable bidding and really just sound project management. So it's really been a terrific success so far, and we look forward to the school opening this fall. So thank you all for your involvement in that.
Ray, just one other thing. You spoke a little bit about the bill 1862 about providing the funds for sped and setting it up. And as Ray alluded to, there's—you may be aware, there's an article in Town Meeting, just in case it doesn't get out of the third reading.
Well, that's wise. I think it's wise to prepare to do that, and it's certainly something that, you know, if you're sending it up to us, it's going to highlight the issue to do it. And my hope is that we've already done it, so that it's a seamless move.
So my thought is, in regard to home rule petitions like that, if it would have to go that rate, if there's no state money involved, is it—how difficult is it still to get those kinds of things through?
Well, no, it's not—it's—there are always issues that come up with home rule petitions. We saw one in Cohasset this year that had a lot of moving parts and some local opposition. So not every home rule that comes to the legislature goes through. In all likelihood, home rules go through as law—you know, some of those that involve funds, moving funds between departments, they get looked at. They get looked at for a reason. Our communities are very well-run. We have very good volunteers who are on the school committee and the Selectman. Not all communities are established that way and haven't been established that way. And that's why the legislature looks at certain things. I think an issue like this in a community that's well-run like Hingham, I don't see any problems moving that bill through the legislature at this point, especially when a bill that allows you to do it is moving so far and has been reported favorably.
Thank you.
Terrific. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
So Sue Kees is joining us from the Foreign Language Department.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Let me just make sure this is loaded. I think it is.
We don't need headphones for this, right? It's not going to be multilingual?
Yeah, it is multilingual. But you won't use it.
The reason it's shaking is that we have a fairly new blower system in the hall. It'll stop in a minute.
Should we shut the heat down for a little? Yeah. Oh, good. Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Susan Kees, and I'm in my second year as Department Director for the Foreign Language Department at Hingham Public Schools. And before we begin, I'd like to offer my thanks to Pam King, who's now Dot Secretary in assembling the brochure that you have in front of you, the report, also to Denise Stanley, who's the new Secretary for the Department Directors. On her second day on the job about a month ago, I pounced on her and said, "Here," and gave her the appendices. I gave her Judy Riley's old report and said, "See what you can do with this." And lastly, to the Tech Squad, who I know addressed you guys, I think, a couple of months ago, both Sarah Coughlin and particularly Gabby Parker, who single-handedly put the PowerPoint together for me, as well as the video montage. I've got videos and still pictures of foreign language classrooms beginning in South School with 6th graders singing Spanish songs, all the way up with AP Chinese, the kids actually speaking bandery to each other in the classroom. It is phenomenal. I wanted you to see the languages in action, but Gabby actually put this together. So she's a phenomenal resource. Tech Squad is a wonderful resource as well in the high school. Before I begin, if we can get this to function properly, I've got different classes saying hello in the four languages. So this—we're going to start with—this is at the middle school, kids speaking Spanish, and it should—let me see if we can get this going correctly. It's going to take a second to load. Oops. It's going to take a minute to load and get up there, I was told. There we go. All right, let's try again. Middle school. You can see the posts bolted to the floor and the ceiling. Middle school French. Chinese, 2 class. And I don't know what happened to Latin. Oh, well, there's one of the Latin classes saying salve te. So program review. I'd like to begin talking about the mission statement of the Hingham Public Schools, which is to provide a challenging and comprehensive educational program in a safe and supportive environment, enabling all students to develop the knowledge and skills for success as local and global citizens. And I've highlighted that last phrase for a reason, because I think implicit in that are two things. One, in order to function successfully as a global citizen, you need to be able to communicate in a second language, whatever language you choose. And in addition, we as educators, it is incumbent upon us, it is our responsibility, to educate the kids, to provide them with the linguistic proficiencies and skills and the cultural knowledge to function successfully as well. If that is our overarching premise for the department philosophy, we—come on, why is this hesitating? There we go. Our job as a department is to prepare all of our students with the foreign language abilities and the intercultural expertise so that they can function successfully in today's globalized society and economy. Effective communication based on knowledge of language and culture essentially is going to be a life—a vital life skill and the key to success and prosperity. Indeed, I think it's difficult to imagine a job or career in the 21st century where being able to speak another language, whether it's Spanish, whether it's Italian, whether it's Korean, whether it's Arabic, whether it's Chinese, what have you, will not be a tremendous asset. Okay? I think that there are several underlying principles to our philosophy. One is that with increasing global interdependence, both economically and financially, it's going to necessitate the ability to at least communicate, if you're not proficient, at least to communicate in a second language. Proficiency in a second language provides an in-depth cultural understanding, so you can appreciate some of the similarities and differences between the culture of the language studied, those belief systems, those values, and our own. It will promote in-depth understanding of our own culture and language. And as far as Latin students are concerned, they will acquire an in-depth awareness of the linguistic and cultural heritage of the English language. In the Standards for Foreign Language Learning in the 21st Century, it's really essentially a vital—it was published by ACTU, the American Council for Teaching Foreign Language, with a lot of national language organizations, states in its beginning that the possession of linguistic and cultural insights with come with foreign language study are going to be a requisite for life as a citizen in the world. Now, if you look down in the lower right-hand corner, those are not the Olympic rings, all right? That's the logo of ACTU, the American Council for Teaching Foreign Languages. And each one of those circles represents one of the five Cs, which I will talk about in just a moment. ACTU itself, in its report—oopsie, sorry, let me go back. I don't know how to go back. And each one of those circles represents one of the five Cs, which I will talk about in just a moment. ACTU itself, in its report, oopsie, sorry, let me go back, I don't know how to go back, says that the United States has got to educate citizens so that they can communicate successfully in a pluralistic society, both here and abroad, okay? And it is imperative in the future that all students develop and maintain proficiency in English. Don't forget, we've got a large minority population, they've got to develop and maintain proficiency in English, as well as proficiency in a second language, so that they can function both personally and professionally in a variety of different settings. Okay? So as a department, our philosophy is that we strive to educate our students to their highest level of linguistic proficiency. Our goal is to graduate students with the speaking, listening, reading, and writing skills that allow them to communicate in a different language, and also to teach them to appreciate and understand other cultures. And how are we going to accomplish this? Well, by focusing on the five Cs, which provide a context for our entire program, grades one through 12. And the five Cs are communication, which is going to be a theme of mine tonight and throughout the report. Culture, appreciation of different heritages, diverse backgrounds, diverse value systems. Connections. If kids are learning a different culture, there are implicit comparisons and contrasts with our own culture. It broadens their horizons. I just, we just talked about comparisons, and also outreach into communities. The objectives to achieve that goal are several. One, give them the necessary skills to communicate, provide them with the cultural knowledge so that they can, again, appreciate the similarities and differences between our culture and the culture of the language that they're studying, to meet the needs of diverse learning styles through a variety of instructional techniques, and to assist students in making connections between not only our culture and the culture of the language studied, but also interdisciplinary connections. Frequently, I have kids walking into my classroom, I teach a French five class, they're coming in from AP Euro History, they're coming in from an English class, saying, "Oh, we talked about that in English class today." "Oh, we just did that last week in AP Euro." So the interdisciplinary approach there is something that I want to talk about as a trend to look for for the future. Let me see if I can get the next slide here. If that's the what, come on, sorry about this, then the why. We're not just teaching foreign language because the Hingham Public School mission statement says that we should. The benefits of second language study have been well documented in dozens of research reports and studies over the past several decades. And really, I think if you, the benefits are long-lasting and far-reaching. Students who study a foreign language have significantly increased cognitive abilities. Scores on standardized tests and aptitude tests are higher than students who don't study a foreign language, often significantly. Students who study a foreign language have improved, increased problem-solving skills. They have higher-order thinking skills. Students of average and below-average intelligence have improved reading scores. That surprised me when I read that, if they've studied a foreign language. Second language learning, if you think about it, is a cognitive activity that enhances critical thinking and other skills, that then transfers to other academic disciplines. Okay? Another, from my own experience, another benefit is that students who study foreign language have a greater facility in manipulating symbolic representation that you find in math and language. And I think you find that particularly upper-level, meaning students who are sophomores, juniors, seniors, taking a foreign language often are still taking math classes, and most of them are still active in the music department at the high school. So there are benefits across the spectrum. So we've got the what, we've got the why, and how are we going to do this? Well, all of our teachers use a broad repertoire of teaching strategies to engage all of the students at all the levels, and I mean all the levels, I mean grades one, elementary through senior year and high school. Classes are taught primarily in the target language. It's astounding to me to go into a classroom of six-year-olds, into a classroom of 11-year-olds, or into a Mandarin AP Chinese class, and you don't hear a word of English. Teachers will speak English to clarify directions, to introduce a new project, but essentially the kids walk into the classroom and they expect this, right? From the minute that bell rings until the ending bell, 47 minutes later at the, in the middle schools, 57 minutes later at the high school. Oh, the classes. And again, with my own experience in visiting and talking to different teachers and doing observations, they are active, they are student-centered, and performance-based. Really, I would say the whole thrust of the program is on oral proficiency, that kids can communicate. Differentiated instruction maximizes opportunities for all students to be successful learners. So at the elementary school, they, the four elementary schools, they use a multisensory approach with audio, visual, and manipulatives, lots of stories, lots of songs. You'll see six-year-olds singing a Spanish song at the end of the report, and lots of synonyms. Interestingly, the three elementary teachers are introducing the idea of synonyms and cognates to these kids, beginning at the age of six years old. And they are given sort of an extra credit project to identify Spanish words out in the community, at a grocery store, in a convenience store, write down that word, and I've seen them come in and read that word, sound it out phonetically to the class, and ask their classmates what they think it means. So they're making connections, they're comparing, again, these five Cs, right? But they see the Spanish language, they bring it into the class, their classmates say, "Oh, that means school," or "that means whatever the word is." And two or three kids per class come up with a piece of paper that the teacher then collects. It's a voluntary, you know, voluntary activity, but all of the kids, those hands are shooting up, "Oh, I found this word, I found five words, I found eight words." It's terrific. In the middle school, we continue to differentiate, but we introduce some grammar and linguistic structures. Students begin to present information orally, working individually or in pairs or in small groups. And in eighth grade, we introduced classes for more advanced students who want to move at a slightly faster pace, they have more difficult, more complex tasks and assessments, and they have enrichment activities. At the high school, we balance all four skills, reading, writing, listening, and speaking in French, Spanish, and Chinese, which encourage students to become proficient in, again, back to the actual base, in interpersonal, interpretive, and presentational forms of communication in the target language. Latin, students focus on grammar, they focus on vocabulary and reading. And also at the high school, we have a language lab, we have a language lab in the middle school, which helps improve speaking and listening skills and provides access to a multitude of resources, now with the written in the state of the art self-book we purchased a couple of years ago. So foreign language learning is cumulative, and the department supports all students in their efforts to master linguistic proficiency and cultural knowledge. Let's take a look at some of the changes in the department since the review in 2009. The Chinese program at the high school has expanded significantly. Erica Pollard, who is the Mandarin teacher, started out at a .4 Chinese position, and now that is .8. I've spoken with Dr. Gerard McCann, I've spoken with Jim Kirk-Caldy, we would like to expand Chinese to full-time. Jim is totally on board with that, and Erica's excited, hopefully, about the prospect of adding full-time Chinese. AP courses have changed a little bit over the last several years. Unfortunately, the College Board, and something near and dear to my heart, canceled the French literature exam. So the French AP exam now focuses on Francophone cultures and language. This year, for the first time in a number of years, we separated the AP Spanish language and the AP Spanish literature courses. So the sequence is that kids can come into the high school and take Spanish II, Spanish III, and as a junior, if they wish, they could take AP Spanish language, and then in the senior year, take AP Spanish literature. Or if they don't want to take the literature course, they could go through Spanish II, III, IV, and take the language course in their senior year with the exam at the end. This year, for the very first time, we are offering an AP Chinese course, which is phenomenal. Erica had a number of, a fairly large section of Chinese III kids a year ago, coming into Chinese IV this year. Last spring, she asked how many of them would be interested in taking an AP Chinese course. A dozen kids signed up, didn't work over the summer, and several of them, three of them dropped, I think, in September. It's, as you can well imagine, a pretty rigorous, demanding academic course. But she has nine kids, they're excited, she's pleased with their progress, so that's really exciting, eager to see their scores. And we run an AP Latin course, and we have enough qualified students, and that may occur next year. It's been a couple of years since we had one. We added to staff at the middle school with increased enrollment, we added a .8 Spanish position that has significantly alleviated overcrowding. Most of the language classes, not all, but many of them, were numbers higher than 25 students. It's very difficult in a foreign language to deliver curriculum effectively, and to get to kids who are, again, with this oral emphasis, you've got to work with the kids closely. If you've got 28, 29 kids in a tiny classroom, just, it's not ideal. The high school language lab has state-of-the-art software, which has significantly improved its new functioning, and greatly expanded the capabilities of the teachers, and also enhanced the learning experience of all the kids. The capabilities of the new language lab are phenomenal. We've added new textbooks. In Latin, we phased in new textbooks. The textbooks were really old, in some cases 30 years old, so that's worked very well. We've added Chinese readers. Erica asked me last year to buy readers for her Chinese II or Chinese III classes, excuse me, I guess it would be Chinese III last year. So if you can imagine, written in the Chinese characters, and the kids read the equivalent of probably a second or third-grade picture book. There were no pictures, but it was all Mandarin, written, you know, in the characters. And the feeling of accomplishment that these kids have, you can well imagine, is really tremendous. So she's asked me to buy more readers next year for the Chinese II kids. We've instituted a Spanish 1A class at the middle school. This is for kids who have not, who are new to the school system, who have not been able to fit a foreign language into their schedule so far, or who need a little bit of remedial instruction. And that's been very successful, though that tends to run in the high teens, low twenties every year, and has worked very well for those kids. And AP scores have trended up over the last few years. I'll give you some specifics a little bit later on in the report, but that's very gratifying. It certainly speaks to the strength of the program and to the tremendous quality and training of the teachers who teach those different classes. It's a little slow. Come on. There we go. The elementary program is Spanish. Grades one and two have Spanish once per six-day cycle in week one and twice in week two. And the other grades have Spanish once every six days. The teachers are specialists. I am in awe of what they do with these little kids. They use a variety of instructional techniques to make connections and comparisons. I said that kids going out looking for cognates, looking for synonyms. And the focus really is on purposeful, very practical communication. Kids learn conversational phrases, they learn useful expressions, they learn useful vocabulary. They, the teachers work very closely and collaborate with the regular classroom teachers at the elementary level, and try to integrate our curriculum, the foreign language curriculum, into the curriculum of the regular classroom. In addition, they collaborate with each other when they can on lessons and projects. The program is very closely integrated into and vertically aligned with the rest of the foreign language program, grades one through 12. Now, language learning is most successful with repetition and increased time on task, and that's achieved only through increased time in the classroom. Now, we've talked about the benefits of foreign language learning promoting long-lasting and significant benefits. In brains in elementary, this has been well documented, brains in elementary school children are much more receptive to new foreign language material at this age than they are in older students. They absorb and retain much more easily. I will never forget sailing for my junior year of college 100 years ago on the USS France, or whatever it was, the ocean liner, and there were little kids running around the ship who were totally bilingual. And I was 18 or 19 or 20 years old, struggling to get a few French phrases out, and jealous and frustrated that these little kids were just able, could go from language to language like that. So that certainly is true. And again, if you start foreign language learning, more than just an introductory program, which is what we have, there are benefits across the spectrum for these kids in other disciplines as well. The middle school program is a little more formal. The sixth graders meet every other day, and seventh and eighth grade classes meet for 47 minutes on a daily basis, such that, hello? Are you going there? Sorry. Where's the mouse? Sorry about this. There we go. That by the end of eighth grade, most of the kids have completed the equivalent of the first year of language study. So when they get to the high school, they can go into Spanish II, or they can go into French II. Okay? We have textbooks. In the sixth grade, the French and Spanish classes maybe get through one chapter. They're not prescriptive, but they provide a little bit of structure, and we introduce, as I've already mentioned, a little bit of grammar and a little bit of linguistic structure information. There's still an emphasis on oral proficiency and a myriad of opportunities for kids to speak. I was in one of the French classes a couple of weeks ago, kids had just learned all the vocabulary about clothing, and they were actually doing a fashion show in the classroom. So there was a moderator, and then two kids walking the catwalk, you know, in their basketball sneakers and their gym clothes or whatever, but with comments about it, and they were having a good time. It was fun to see. Again, the curriculum is vertically aligned with the sending schools for elementary and vertically aligned with our high school curriculum. You'll see in one of the appendices, there are exit expectations coming out of eighth grade French and Spanish classes, and what we expect the kids to be able to do when they come into ninth grade. The teachers collaborate on lessons, on projects, and assessments. The middle school teachers also organize every spring a trip to Quebec. And so it's hours and hours and hours of planning, as you know, for a trip abroad with students. In this case, there's, it's a bus trip rather than a long flight someplace. But it's gratifying for the kids, it's gratifying, it's exhilarating for the kids to be able to actually use a foreign language in a different country in a setting. A light bulb goes off. "Oh, I actually can do this. I can understand what they're saying a little bit, and they can understand me." And to begin that interchange, begin that exchange, is just wonderful to witness. They address all four skills in the middle school program, so again, reading, writing, listening, speaking, whatever, just conversational at the elementary level. And next year, at the middle school in the new school building, we're going to have a language lab. I can't tell you what an opportunity that is for the kids to practice their speaking and their listening skills, and it provides access to all kinds of cultural information and presentational skills as well. It's, I'm really excited about that. The high school, we have, come on, there we go. Added Chinese and Latin are also available for study, but a very successful, well-developed sequence of courses in all of these languages. The graduation requirement is two years of the successful completion of two years of the same language. So occasionally, I know kids have taken a language, didn't really pass it, or do well enough to go on, and repeated it, and said, "Well, that's two years." No. You need to take two sequential years of the language in order to satisfy a graduation requirement. However, lots of colleges and universities are now looking for another number of three years. And so what that means is that we've got increasing numbers of upperclassmen, juniors and seniors, enrolled in our more advanced classes. So they're taking fourth and fifth-year languages, they're taking, moving into the AP classes. So the enrollment in those classes is increasing, which is terrific. In the language lab, every class cycles through there at least once for 30 minutes on our seven-day cycle. There are occasional free periods available. We try to get these AP classes in, or a teacher can sign up and bring a class in to do a project. I mean, it is used every hour of every day. It's terrific. Teachers teach in the target languages, they do in elementary and middle schools, with an emphasis, again, on oral skills and proficiency. The textbooks that we use now all have online components, so it's not just going online and reviewing vocabulary and learning grammar, but they're actual, it's almost like a workbook, but they can actually, because they have online and they have access codes, they can, in the lab, they can do listening and speaking exercises as well. The language lab is just a phenomenal resource that we have. So having reviewed the programs, what are the strengths in the different levels? What are the strengths that we've got? Well, whoops, oh, shoot. How do you go back? Here we go. All right, back button. The success of the program is directly related to highly qualified faculty. I cannot emphasize strongly enough the superior, superior quality of the teachers that we have in this program. They possess a depth and breadth of knowledge of the subject matter, which is just awe-inspiring, and really enhances the learning experience of all of their students. They use technology, it's ingrained into the curriculum. The curriculum- The curriculum is vertically aligned, grades 1 through 12. I've talked about that already. And when I go occasionally to meetings with some of my counterparts in other school districts and they go, "Oh, hang on, because somebody is a department director for the middle school or somebody's a department director just for the high school." And you don't get that clear vertical articulation, which makes our program run efficiently, use appropriate accountability from the teachers, and sequential learning for the kids. I taught for one year in another school district west of Boston, and there was no vertical alignment. And the overlap, it was very inefficient. Let's see. Vertical curricular alignment. There's very close coordination with sending schools. At our professional development day in December, I asked the teachers of the fifth-grade Spanish courses, so the elementary teachers, to work very closely with the sixth grade to make sure that the transition from elementary to middle school in Spanish was as seamless as possible. And I tightened up a couple of things. In fact, that vertical articulation, we review annually in December and adjust as necessary. Let's see. Talked a little bit about more increasing numbers of students taking higher-level courses, the AP score is improving. And let me see if I can find... Yeah. The number of fours and fives continues to... Scores of fours and fives continue to increase. And as I said, that speaks to the strength of the program and the teachers. Last year, for instance, the average score on the French AP exam was 4.4. The average score in Massachusetts was 3.6, and the average national score was 3.4. So we were a full point higher. The Spanish language, last year, the average score was 4.0. Massachusetts was 3.2, and nationally was 3.3. In the Spanish literature exam, tough exam, our average score was a 3.6. Massachusetts was 3.3, and nationally was 3.2. Okay, so our scores for the last number of years have been higher than the Massachusetts average and certainly higher than the national average. That's great stuff. Come on. Okay. Couple of program concerns. Talk a little bit about the Chinese program. As you can well imagine, if you think about it, becoming minimally proficient in Chinese requires a whole lot more contact time than required to become minimally proficient in a romance language. Okay? And so it's frustrating for Erica, it's frustrating for some of the kids. I would say I get more questions from parents about why isn't there a Chinese 1 program? Erica's been very ingenious, and we alternate courses. So this year, last year we taught Chinese 3, this year we're teaching Chinese 2 and 4 and AP. Okay? Next year we'll go back to Chinese 1 and Chinese 3. And it was her suggestion to hang on to the program, that we alternate that. It's frustrating for her, it's frustrating for the kids. So I'd like to offer Chinese 1 every year. I want the kids to be able to go through that. And certainly, the demand is there. Class size at the middle school, there are still classes that are over 25, so I certainly hope that with the addition of the 1A position this year, we can hang on to that and we'll see what happens. I know the process coming into the middle school, I believe the incoming sixth grade is huge. Am I right on that?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
But there's an extra half foreign language teacher in the budget for them.
Thank you.
If you need it.
If it turns up. Let me think about that. And lack of common planning time, particularly at the middle school, is frustrating for them if they're working on lessons, they're working on projects, they're working on assessments. And particularly this year, as we're developing with this new evaluation system, these DVDs, these district return measures, they're driving everybody around the bend. The lack of common planning time, because you've got multiple teachers teaching different sections of the same course, we'll have to have the same assessment. They have to develop the same rules. They have to talk about the same administration conditions. And so trying to get them to have, create time to work on that has been tough. I give them, we meet monthly, I give them that time, but it really isn't sufficient. So where are we headed over the next couple of years? Certainly... Come on, there we go. We'd like to have full-time Chinese. And as I mentioned, you know, it takes, we need a whole lot more class time, contact hours to become even proficient in Chinese, so that makes sense. I'd like to expand the elementary program so that it's more than just introductory. We've talked about the benefits of early language learning, foreign language learning, and it provides a very, very, in my opinion, compelling rationale for expanding the elementary program. I'd like to see it three times a week, maybe for half an hour, or certainly alternate days rather than 40 minutes once every six days. I would like to, in my spare time, I've talked to Kirk and I've talked to Laney about this, investigate a way to, an approach to, an interdisciplinary approach to some of the courses that we have. It certainly would lend itself to history, it certainly would lend itself to English and to music and to the arts. And that's something that I personally would like to see if we can introduce. Community outreach, I'm very appreciative, as are all the teachers, for the support that we get from the community, but I'd like us to be a little bit more visible in the future. Some of the things that I have in mind might be like spelling bees in fifth grade in the springtime, doing a foreign language night at the middle school, and certainly having a more active approach to Foreign Language Week, which is in Irwin March at the high school with union nights, getting community speakers, those kinds of things. I just couldn't get it onto my plate this year. So now, we're going to... I've got a video montage. Oh, shoot. Let me let this load. No. Oh, some still photographs. This is going to take a minute to load. Still photographs at East School, the middle school, and then at Plymouth River. And then videos, you'll actually see kids in the language lab... Let me pause this for a minute, excuse me. Whoops. Whoa. This is at East. And the video montage, the actual videos, you see kids taking a listening and speaking assessment in the language lab. You see kids at South, and then different language classes at the high school using the languages in action. These are stills, but pretty soon we're going to get to audio. French class, TPR, learning gestures in response to certain words and phrases. Plymouth River, Jen Gonzalez, terrific teacher. Bulletin board. Jen again. This is at Foster. One of the bulletin boards. All right, here we go, in the language lab. Just a sec. Spanish 3 class. The kid's responses got cut off. I'm not a great videographer. This is a pop quiz in French class. Working in pairs. Mr. Porter's class. The next one, I believe, is... Oh, no, this is Latin class, chanting the verbs. That young lady, if I can pause this for a second. I don't know whether I can. I'll come back to her. Maybe I'm okay. She applied to a study abroad program in China last summer on her own and was accepted and went and lived with a family for six or seven weeks. She's an AP Chinese, AP French, just terrific language student. And lastly? Buenas noches. Okay. In closing, I would just like to say that last fall, at the back-to-school night for parents at the high school, a couple went up to one of the teachers at the high school. They have, a child has gone through the Hingham School system, and they have another student at the high school currently, and they said to this teacher, and said to me, said that the foreign language department is the feather in the cap of the Hingham Public School system. I couldn't have said it better myself. So thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm sure there are a few. I had one. So in your materials, you mentioned the lab coordinator for the high school.
Oh, I forgot to talk about her, yeah.
And how you thought that her talents were such that she was underutilized. So how could you see that, either her particularly or that role being used better?
Well, I think we've asked for more hours for her for next year to get her back up to where the original lab coordinator, Lisa Paul, was a few years ago. Claire Burgess's background is in technology. In fact, she consults with a number of clients in the private sector outside of the 25 hours that she gives us every week. She schedules the teachers. She takes care of the lab. She troubleshoots at any time. And you've got 30 carols, you've got hardware, you've got software, and on any given day there's a glitch, which is someplace. She can identify the problem like that, and in three years, I have never known her to be wrong. Joanne is spread so thin, it might take them a day or two to get to the carol, but then the lab is down, or those carols are down. She, when the lab was down on functioning, I think, was it early part of this year, September? Or was it a year ago? Listen, I've got white hair, I don't... I think it was this year. She helped the teachers devise exercises so they never missed their cycle in the lab. She's bright, she understands what we're doing, she's trained, she goes to webinars, the teachers go to webinars, she teaches us about exercises. It's really become an integral part. It's an extension of the classroom, in a way, if you will, and an essential tool. And I think to give her more hours, perhaps she could advise on the middle school, that would be tough, but there are ways, maybe, Ray, that she could be used just to technology overall. She is really knowledgeable, she's very skilled, and I want to hang on to her.
Yes, obviously, that new software package at high school is two or three years now?
I'm going to say...
Two or three. Anyway, so...
Updated annually.
We did the hardware one year and the...
Right. Updated annually. But prior to that, you know, on any given day, anywhere from three, four, five, six carols randomly would malfunction. The system would freeze, and you can imagine, because this actually happened in mid-year and final exams and in AP exams, somebody's in doing a recording, and you don't know it, because it would show when you go to collect the exercises, all right, you have to do that, all right, and it shows that it's been recorded. In fact, it didn't. Now, that's a problem with AP courses. That has stopped with the new software. But it's updated annually. She learns the new capabilities and then shares them with us and helps us develop projects and classroom exercises.
And so how do we, I don't know if we talked about this, that role at the middle school with the language lab. How are we going to address potential...
Well, we are not going to address it with a full-time lab coordinator. That was an early decision. And it relates to the fact that it's a piece of software that is easier to use.
Right.
However, part of my willingness to forward the additional hours for Claire was thinking that she could play a leadership role in getting the thing off the ground and organized and that kind of thing. So those hours are in the budget, the additional...
I'll tell you how talented she is, Ray. I was at a meeting in December, I believe, at the middle school to talk about the new language lab, and she was there. Mary Mahoney, is that the right name?
Yes.
Is there? And actually contacted Claire after the meeting and said, "You are so knowledgeable, both with foreign language and the technology, but also with computers. I would like you to come to these kinds of meetings with me in other school districts." That's how good she is. So I thought that she's...
Hey, anybody else?
I have a few comments. First of all, thank you for this. This is quite a pamphlet for us. And I appreciated the part on the faculty. That was great. It kind of makes the people, you know, you see names and you hear names, but this was wonderful, because it makes them really stand out, and they have a lot of accomplishments that we should be very proud of.
Yes, they do.
Question on getting back to the budget.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if this is a question for Paula or Dot, maybe we haven't decided, but with our secondary additional personnel, are we putting any other than the lab to help sort of with the enrollment and the common planning time to try to work on that issue?
Well, I'm not sure that that's the common planning time, it's more of a scheduling issue.
Okay.
And it should be made more possible with the new building, where people aren't so cramped into rooms and...
The middle school.
...no flexibility in the schedule. So I think some of that will be easier. With respect to the FTEs for things like the Chinese that was mentioned, the fifth to sixth grade bump up in staffing, when we got information in the fall about the budget, we actually collect the information in terms of where the directors think we will be in terms of the need for number of sections next, a year later. And so that's where that 4.5 secondary FTEs came from. It came from saying, "Well, if we move Erica to full-time instead of eight-tenths in Chinese, then we have to pick up an additional section of social studies," because that's what she's now doing. So we built the budget with those pieces of people in mind. Now, when we sit down this spring, you know, we hope that they were right in guessing at how many FTEs were needed, but if we're right and if they were all right in coming up with the needed FTEs, we should be able to take care of those kinds of situations.
Thank you. So now the question on the interdisciplinary coordination. Are you involved at all with the new GCP program?
No.
I know GCP requires that you take, I think it's three years of a language...
Only peripherally out of personal interest. I get to meetings when I can.
Okay.
Not as much as I'd like to be.
Is that something sort of down the road, maybe?
Oh, very much so. I think that's a natural opportunity.
I would think.
Our focus at home, that's a global citizenship program.
Program at the high school. And finally, just as a parent of somebody who has graduated from Hingham High School, I can only echo what you talked about other parents mentioning. I had a daughter that walked into college, she loved it, but she loved at the high school and passed the fluency exam, just like that. No problem. It was a requirement for her college that she was in, and so, you know, kudos.
She called me as a freshman. She passed the act of proficiency exam. That is extraordinarily difficult to do, and she was just so excited.
And appreciative.
Right, well...
Of what she learned.
Yeah, thank you. Regularly, graduates of the high school, when I come back to visit and say hello at Thanksgiving or Christmas, maybe at the end of the school year, I always ask them about how they feel about the preparation overall, and very strong, I say, "Okay, how about foreign language?" "Oh, you know, Madame," and this was maybe somebody who was not in an honors course but was in a struggle to be a B student. I tested into a 200-level course. So our program, the rigor and strength of our program is good enough that we're sending kids out to colleges and universities all over the country, and they are testing into intermediate-level language courses. That's terrific. That's good stuff. intermediate-level language courses. That's terrific. That's good stuff.
You may
Thank you.
As people here know, that my two grandchildren are growing up bilingual, because my son's wife is a native German speaker and also happens to speak French and Romanian.
Well, they're European.
So, I'm glad to hear about the cognitive advantages of second foreign language.
Yes, yeah.
But along those lines, and as you said, how quickly kids pick up
Oh.
languages. My nephew lives in New York. His wife is Brazilian, so their kids both are fluent in Portuguese and English. And their daughter, who went to a Chinese day school, preschool, now knows, she's not fluent in Mandarin, but at age seven, speaks all three languages. So, I'm just wondering in that regard, and I only know, for instance, about the Milton Immersion Program by reputation, what I've read, you know, that the more we could do, and I'm not suggesting that program for here, but the more we could do at the early grades.
Yeah.
Like you say, you know, an hour or two a week in first grade is probably equivalent to 10 hours a week or whatever, you know, in eighth grade, so.
Their brains are like sponges at that age.
Yeah. And, you know, as we think about programs like that, expanding the foreign language, it's really a function of two things. Most people think most immediately, oh, it's the cost, but it's also the cost in terms of time with the many mandates in terms of testing requirements. Finding time to do more is a challenge as well.
Well, that's, and I'm probably going to steal your thunder just for a second, but you brought up an idea in the past
Yeah.
about the specials at the elementary level.
I'd like to have it blocked.
Yeah, how, if, and I actually asked my kids this question at the dinner table tonight, because I remember you bringing that up, and it's something that I thought about, too. What if you had, you know, the kids have the specials every sixth day or some every 12th day, depending on the level and what the special is. What if you were to take each special, you get about two months of time, and your material, you said about two months of time in the elementary level.
Right.
What if you took two months, and every time you had a special, you had Spanish? And what would the difference be if you did that and could alternate the, you know, it probably wouldn't be as valuable for some of the other specials, or at least you wouldn't see the return on it. Maybe some art, because it's project-based.
Sure.
But you would really, I think, see the return on the language?
Huge.
Yeah.
Well, that's, so, to refresh everything, three years ago, I suggested, instead of having our kids do language on Monday, art on Tuesday, gym on Wednesday, whatever on Thursday, let's put everything in, it would be two months. You do language for the first two months, then art for the two months, and some of the, I thought it'd be good, because then it would be more continuity, but Dr. Gallo felt, and some of the principles, the feedback was, that some kids, it'd be less stressful if you did it, broke it up.
Well, and I think in certain subjects like music, when you want to have, you know, concerts and so on over the course of the year and time
Oh, right, sure.
in between things to do more practice. Of course, the thing I like about that idea is it would force us to have to have one of everything in every building.
Actually, remember, the key driver was this
Unintended consequence.
What's that?
Unintended consequence of the suggestion.
No, no, but I mean, also, I mean, some of this was because we had teachers, I mean, when I first met Madame Keys, she was going from the high school to the middle school. And I don't know, I'm assuming she still
We have three foreign language teachers, so there's sharing all over the place. You don't have the flexibility of time, so really efficient.
But I do agree with Ray. I would think with a language, it would be better if you did it every day. Does that ask one question?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
So, Madame Keys, that was an excellent presentation. Thank you very much. I would like to beg, wish you could do this. We only give this once every four years. This is an amazing document you have here. I don't know whether you can scan it in PDF, whether it's already in PDF, but push it out through X2, so, because this is comprehensive from K to 12. I think every parent would love to receive this. Have a link on the website. I cannot stress this enough, but this is a wonderful document.
Thank you.
And I think people would like to see this and to continue to push the information. And you might also want to put the link on H-Cam, so they can see your live presentation, too.
Well, thank you. There's a rationale for every one of the appendices that's in there.
No, but I mean, people, this would be excellent thing for people to refer to.
Thank you.
Like another foreign language, right?
Yes, right.
Anything else?
I'll just echo Jim Kirkaldi, put his social studies one up, and he told me, "I finally did it, and I was so excited to see it on the website."
Oh, okay.
So, I'm sure the tech squad could help you
I'm not sure they want to see me again, but I'll give them a couple of days.
And I thank you for, I have a fourth grader who, before, the day before, Spanish. Mom, I gotta do my Spanish words?
See?
And she loves bringing in what she wants to, what words she wants to learn
Yeah.
from the teacher, so, and then my high schooler has been taking Spanish
All the way through.
since it started in the elementary school.
Yeah.
And then my ninth grader loves the variety, because she had Spanish in elementary school and chose in middle school, nope, I want to take French, because I want something different. And she's continuing with the French in high school.
Great.
But now she's planning to take Chinese as well next year, and she loves the variety. So, thank you for offering that. And she would have taken Chinese one this year.
This year.
It was offered, so I'm one here that I think that's the way of the future, and
Oh, clearly.
it would be beneficial to get more kids
Yeah. One statistic, two statistics I forgot to mention. I was a little thrown with it, because the PowerPoint was so off on the screen. We have more than 90% of all the students at the high school who are now taking a foreign language. I think that's a wonderful, wonderful statistic. And Paul and I were talking about this afternoon. 6% of the students are taking two languages, which is pretty terrific. So, any combination of whatever, it's great. Thank you.
Thank you again, very much.
Thank you very much.
I guess I'll leave that till
You may not want to, madame.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. Thank you, though. While our own tech squad is busy at work over there, we'll just maybe refresh everyone's recollection about the budget process, so we're going to return to the budget. 8.3. So, as you may know, and folks at home, if they don't know, last week, both the selectmen and the advisory committee heard presentations and voted on all of the budgets that had not been previously voted, in the case of the selectmen. And we now have a fiscal '15 projected budget voted and ready to go to town meeting that is balanced with a small surplus and also includes two forms of tax relief for citizens, which is very exciting. As a result of those votes, both by the selectmen and advisory committee, those were the votes that were recommended by the Education Subcommittee of Advisory, which represented a reduction in the budget that we voted on February 24th. So, this is not the first time that that has happened, and certainly, we have the opportunity now to take a look at that, to have discussion if we like, and to possibly consider changing our vote to go to town meeting. We're certainly not obligated to change our vote. We can certainly go to town meeting with the budget that we voted previously. But it would seem to me that a review of the votes from last week and a consideration of changing our vote is in order, particularly based on, I think, the spirit of collaboration that was exhibited, I think, between this group and the Education Subcommittee, members of advisory, in the weeks leading up to the votes. Certainly, you know, I think based on our vote, we prefer not to cut anything. But I, in my own personal opinion, I don't think the requested reduction is terribly unreasonable, and maybe something that we're able to make up, and we can talk more about that in a couple minutes. So, you have a handout which indicates the numbers that were voted. So, just to remind you, on February 24th, we voted a total budget of $43,647.23. You're going to see the 723, 722. There were some rounding errors, and the numbers ended up being a little bit different when we went to, when the numbers went to advisory. The advisory vote and selectmen vote represented a decrease from that amount of $150,001 of $43,490.722. So, that's combined personnel and expenses. We don't take separate votes for those, just the combined number. So
But in the warrants, Ray
It'll be split up.
They do need to split, and they are on that sheet
That's right.
in the box.
Right. And essentially, the $150,000 reduction comes out of the personnel side, and as far as advisory is concerned, represents, I think, what they came up with, three FTEs representing $50,000 apiece. I think when you break it down in terms of how we approached it, it really represents, it may represent the $112,000 that we voted to put back in, representing the adjustment counselors, and an additional $37,000 and change of FTE
John and I, this is a group effort. I say that in case we've made an error in it. But anyway, we felt that a number of people are kind of struggling with how to visualize at least the personnel part of it. So, we've got four slides that go through the four phases of this.
Sure.
So, this is where we started with the original proposal on the personnel category, and that's without dollars, just with the FTEs. And we had broken them down at that point, because it was a question about how many of them would be new people versus pieces of additional people. So, then the next thing that happened is that we came in with some administrative reductions, and you can see what they were, recommended to the school committee on the 24th. So, there were the two adjustment counselors. There was one maintenance person we recommended reducing, so that dropped that total number of FTEs to 10.5. On the other side, which are the pieces of people, the kindergarten and the .2 elementary art, the .3 field maintenance, which was an error, actually, in the original line items. We had already put that into the budget. And so, the new FTE portion of the proposed total reduction that we were recommending is shown there in the red. And so, at that point, the budget that we were recommending was the 43,528,506. At that same meeting, the school committee acted and actually adopted a budget. And in that budget, the adjustment counselors went back in, so there, you can see on the right that the $112,214 was added back into the recommended reductions, and that gave us the 43,647,23. And then, we had the scrutiny by the Education Subcommittee, and ultimately, the votes of the education, of the AdCom and the Board of Selectmen that happened last Thursday night. And so, this is how we kind of visualize what has happened. The blue is still there, and that's the school committee's budget. And so, you can see that everything that's in blue and in black, you can see where that trail was. And you can see the administration's 43,647,23 budget. But then, if you look at the green, and the green represents how AdCom Education Subcommittee got to their recommendation, and we hope this is accurate. Essentially, they looked at the reductions that had been made prior, said, "That seems to work for us, but we would like you to look in addition at three particular categories: the elementary classroom teaching, based upon the fact that those numbers, overall at least, are not intended to go down, but we had asked for two additional teachers. Look again at the adjustment counselors, and look at the custodial category, and they identified the two elementary teaching, the two adjustment counselors, and the two of the three custodians as things that they perhaps didn't see as level services, and said, "You need to reduce three of those six." That was how they came up with the number of the recommendation, and therefore, reduce the 43,647,23 by the equivalent of those three FTEs, which was $150,01. That's that rounding inconsistency, to come to a total of 43,497,22, and that's the figure that was voted by both AdCom and Selectmen last week.
Great. That's very clear. I like that. Okay, so, yes, Paul?
There isn't a question. So, I might have missed part of what you were saying. Are you saying that this is what you and John believed they did in terms of
Well, I'm saying that we hope we interpreted
This is what they did.
It's important to me to know.
It's correct.
Yeah, I think that fairly represents the discussions I heard.
It's the correct numbers. It's just that it was, the personnel part of it changed a number of times. I'm just trying to make it a little
I believe the narrative's correct. Laura is nodding.
It's a discussion.
So, in the end, I guess, on the left, there was our proposals as of the 24th?
Yes.
And then, we were basically asked to cut three of those?
Well, the 43,647,23 was your vote, your proposal. The vote of Board of Selectmen AdCom is the green on the left, 43,497,22. So, that's what's going to town meeting, that number. And the AdCom Education Subcommittee talked long and hard about how to get to a number. So, not just picking one out of the air, but how to get to it. And the way that they recommended getting to it, or that they thought about getting to it, was saying that we can see six FTEs there that perhaps we wouldn't classify as level services, and of course, we hadn't presented level services to them, and that we think that three of them would be reasonable to remove from the budget. So, but of course, you are the folks that have the right and the responsibility to identify how the dollars will be cut. I'm just trying to point out that how they got to the number.
Right.
And it was a suggestion that, think of six people. We don't quite see those as level services. Put three of them in, assume that three would need to go.
Right. And so, essentially, when on the 24th, the administration presented recommended reductions, which amounted to the $366,000 reduction, whatever the number was, okay? And we didn't approve that. We reduced that by the $112 for the adjustment counselors. If we had approved that entire reduction, advisory, the reduction beyond that was only $37,000 and change. But that, coupled with the $112, represents the $150,000, and to kind of equate it with the way they are approaching the budget and rationalizing it and trying to piece it together with representative FTE pieces, they came up with the three positions, and as Dot explained, what they presumed were not necessarily level services in the way that they would define them.
That included the adjustment counselors.
But that's
Not necessarily, and we voted a principle, rather than a dollar amount, about the adjustment counselors. So, our vote about the adjustment counselors, I think, stands. The, what we're now faced with, if we reconsider the budget vote that we made, is finding a way to pay for those in the amount of money that we have, okay? And that may mean that other cuts need to be made, or that we may be able to, with the pool of dollars that is authorized, may be able to fund all of those items.
I understand the last part of it. I just want to, so, in my mind, the budget that came back, and with absolute respect to the Education Subcommittee and the advisory and Board of Selectmen, it appeared to me that that $150 included the $112.
It does, but not specifically the adjustment counselor positions, but essentially, three FTEs.
You basically said the school committee will decide
Right.
what of the six
What of the six positions that we initially thought maybe doesn't meet level services? We're going to throw back three, and it'll be up to the school committee to decide how they're going to allocate those three positions.
Well, one of the scenarios, we'd have to make up the cuts to pay for that.
Yeah, because I think we've already addressed...
None of the scenarios.
Yeah, there are three scenarios, really. There are three scenarios, and if you focus just on the two bottom numbers and forget the positions there for a minute, you voted 43,640, you need to get to 43,490. So I see three ways to do that. One is to do some other cutting in this personnel area. A second is to say, "We'll do some other cutting somewhere, because we think these are the priorities to keep." And the third thing is to find some savings somewhere else, or a source of revenue, which is less likely than savings, that would allow you to get closer to where you would like to be. So those are the three choices. So, the slide with the FTEs is just to kind of show you how we got to where we are, but the real decision is, do you want to live with the 43,497,22 at this point? Or, do you want to look at, over a period of time, and certainly, if your want is to live within that budget, then we would also recommend that you give us a date, first part of May, and say, "Come back to us then," and either, one of two things. Either tell us then how you could fund the things that you see as priorities in the original budget. Or, we come back to you and say, "You know what? We don't see those savings this year in this budget, and these are what we would recommend cutting, and in the end, you'd make a decision about that."
And I know that we all work together on this committee, and I know we work with advisory and Board of Selectmen. I'm just telling you my personal, I just felt so strongly after that presentation from the adjustment counselors, that I was hopeful that, in my mind, that it would be still in there, even though it's up to us to make the decisions.
Well, I think it is still in there, because you voted it specifically.
Yeah, I think, based on our vote, to keep that funding in specifically for the adjustment counselor positions, I think the adjustment counselor positions are in. And I think we have to find the money elsewhere. And that may be in savings that we can realize in the next two months, or it's cutting other positions.
And if that were your only priority, is putting those back in, then you need to find the $112.
Well, and I'll be honest with you, and I don't mean to belabor this discussion, but it's not my only priority.
No, but I'm just saying that if it were, it's...
I say this, I was very comfortable, to the extent I could be, that we weren't doing everything we wanted to, but we had, you know, based on the administration's proposal and our vote, we had certain things in there at a certain level.
Right.
And so, I'm really not comfortable at cutting other things to get to that, but I do, that certainly is a priority of mine. I mean, it's just my personal feelings on it. But I understand what you're saying.
But that really reinforces my point of, give us some time. There are still a lot of moving pieces in our budget. Kindergarten enrollment is going on as we speak. We got another notification of a vocational school application today. That's not a positive budget thing, but that's another thing. We have two of the original 12 people who took leaves, who asked for an extension in decision-making, because there were things going on in their personal lives, one we'll know about by the end of this week, and one by the end of the month. We'll have lots of changes between now and then. The first part of May is when we sit down with the elementary principals, and also with the directors and the principals at the secondary level, and we decide, based upon the student tallies and the information we have about enrollment, how many classes of everything that we need. And so by then, we've got to have a pretty good idea of what the staffing part of the budget will be, although other things could be flexible. So there are a lot of changing pieces, and so if it were to turn out that we were not able to fund everything that you would like to fund, delaying the decision-making about the which things makes sense to do in the early part of May.
And when we come back in May with the report, we could be in a better shape, we could be in worse shape.
We could be.
I don't mean to be...
Typically, we are in better shape, but, you know, these three vocational surprises we've had recently, now the children haven't been accepted yet, and that's another reason for waiting until May, that, you know, maybe none of them will be accepted.
And I guess, is it, just so unclear, and I apologize, I probably should know it, but is it ultimately about the adjustment counselors? If we come to May, we wait to make the decisions, how is that decision made?
Well, you will make that, you will make that decision, but as far as I'm concerned, when you took your vote, the vote on February 24th, I took from that, that you were voting a number that included the adjustment counselors, that excluded the other things that at that time we had recommended be cut, and that your vote included everything else that was in the budget. So there's a concrete list of things that we had taken out. You put back two of them. So in my mind, it's everything except what we took out, but including the adjustment counselors, is what's sitting in there at the moment.
Right. And I think if we, assuming we still feel the same way tonight, and I would imagine that we do, if we agree to vote the reduction of $150,000, that will either be made up by savings, or it won't, and if it needs additional cuts, they'll come in areas other than the adjustment counselors. The adjustment counselors, I believe, will be there, because I think that's our intention.
Right. I mean, I just, last thing I'll say on the whole thing is, it gives me some comfort to know that the adjustment counselors will be there. It doesn't make me feel better that we're going to be cutting somebody else.
Well, and hopefully, we may not.
I know.
That's the reason for the delay.
I understand.
You're not cutting, you're just not adding.
Well, you might have to cut if we didn't have the money.
No, no, because these are all the new employees. So instead of adding 13.5, we're adding at least 9.5 on that left-hand dollar.
And you're supposed to only take three of the six, and the green is what we said, the adjustment counselors were ones that were not level services, although I disagree with that. Bottom line is, something has to give if we don't have the money, Andy. That's the bottom line.
Yeah.
And that's called cutting, to me.
Yeah. I would agree, especially when we've characterized them as needs, I think it does, it would qualify as a cut. Dennis?
Yeah. So, you know, having been at the meeting where the AdCom Subcommittee went through this, I think you did an excellent job of deliberating through it, of wrestling with it, of grappling with those issues of defining, as you saw it, the level services. I thought you were very respectful of the decisions that need to be made at the school committee level, versus the decisions that are made to fund a budget, and got to a number that frankly, I don't really have a problem with, in the context of the discussion that we had, that was had, and the numbers that were available at that time. I will just say that, since we had an adjustment counselor in every elementary school in 2009, I don't think it's level services to have an adjustment counselor for two elementary schools in 2014. And I believe the rest of the school committee pretty much feels that way as well, and we're going to, it sounds like we're going to fund those positions. On the other hand, I do have a concern, and unfortunately, I was traveling last week and wasn't able to be at the meetings where the votes were taken and presented, but looking at the forecast, and I've been looking at forecasts for nine years, so I'm pretty familiar with it, but I believe that somewhere in here, I'm told, there is some roughly $400,000 that's, whether it's to pay down debt service, whether it's not to fully use the tax levy, I'm not sure yet, I haven't talked to Ted about it. If that in fact is the case, I have a real problem with that. And if there's $400,000 available, and we're saying we shouldn't fund adjustment counselors, and we shouldn't fix the play shed at Foster School that's been deemed structurally deficient, and we shouldn't put the ovens in the schools that don't hold temperature, and we shouldn't fund in capital the coolers that, some of which are not holding temperature, and that's just in the school department, and we should, and then we should take $200,000 out of fund balance to fund the capital that's been proposed by the capital outlay committee. That doesn't make any sense to me. So, my position would be, as a school committee, that I think that advisory did a good faith effort to weigh what they knew at the time to bring this thing into balance. I think we were treated fairly in respect with the other town departments. But I have a little problem, and I don't know the answer to the, I haven't gotten to the bottom of that story yet. It's been a very non-transparent part of the budget, as best as I can tell, part of the forecast, which I've been trying to get to the bottom to for a few weeks. If in fact, that money is available, I would think at the floor of town meeting, someone might, as a concerned citizen, propose that that money be put back into available revenues, and be used to offset things like capital outlay that should be made, or parts of the school department, or paying down our OPEB and pension liabilities that we incurred 20 years ago and haven't yet paid off, and things like that. So, I don't personally have any, a problem with the numbers that were voted, I shouldn't say that. I'm more of a problem with the capital outlay number than I do with the operating number, but particularly that the foster shed. And so I think that, you know, I think we, my inclination would be to vote a number that corresponds with what advisory and selectmen have voted, but if we find that there are some significant revenues available, above and beyond the meals tax revenues that are used to provide some tax relief on a project that's running under budget and 40% below what we told the taxpayers it would cost them, because of the way it's being funded, and the fact that it's coming under budget, I think, in my opinion, that the town should understand that, and that the townspeople may decide that they want to go a different way.
No, I think it's a fair point, and not everyone was at the meetings last week with the votes. You know, not everyone perhaps spent enough time with the forecast, and certainly, we're not all included in meetings necessarily that discuss certain things about it. But, you know, I will tell you along the lines that Dennis mentioned, that there are two forms of tax relief that are being offered this year, and are inserted into the forecast as an ongoing system of tax relief, which future boards and future town meetings can either vote yes or no on, or change altogether, but right now, they're in there. And so one is $600,000, which is coming from the meals tax. That is going to essentially reduce the excluded debt, the amount of excluded debt that we're carrying on the books. And for this year, an additional $400,000, so actually, based on, based on the forecast, were $401,000 in surplus. But $400,000 of that, which is essentially unexpended revenue available in the levy capacity, so we're not going to, we're not taxing as much as we could, right? They're going to use that money and reduce the tax rate. So every taxpayer will get a reduction in the tax rate. And plugged into the forecast in next year and all the out-years, is the same $600,000 amount from the meals tax being used to reduce excluded debt, and $500,000 in unexpended revenue available in the levy capacity. So every year, right now, being proposed is a million one in tax relief. Tax relief is a great thing, in principle, okay?
Plus the million dollars they've put away last year.
Okay. But tax relief is a good thing, and I'm not suggesting that it's not. I do think, however, that it's a challenge when we didn't hear anything about the $400,000 tax relief plan until really last week publicly, and it's been in the forecast for longer than that, and now it's proposed for out-years as well, again, which could change from year to year. But it's just, it's a little bit troubling, and not suggesting that we shouldn't be giving tax relief, because I'll enjoy the tax relief as well, and we all will, but when you're reducing operating budgets in order to give what I think is unbalanced tax relief, maybe it's not the best way to go about money management. And when you have available money in operating and you're not putting it into capital expenditures, rather you're taking money out of reserves, because you want to give that tax relief, it's kind of, well, you're giving it here, but then you're taking it there. So Dennis' point's pretty well taken. You know, it's not up to us to decide tax policy in this town, but we all should know what is intended in this forecast, how the budget was balanced, and what the selectmen and advisory committee are intending to do, with some of the money that they've proposed to cut from the budget we voted.
And just so I understand it, is it the Board of Selectmen alone, or is it them with advisory that carved out this extra $400,000 in relief?
Well, it's both. It was, I believe, it was initially a proposal by one selectman, which then was proposed to advisory, and it'll go before town meeting, but both boards.
Yeah. So the average person watching tonight, I mean, it was a decision made, whether it be, you would call it political inoperative, that the bodies that have that ability make those decisions, but for that decision, there would have been some extra money in operating for things like education and other things to be used.
Capital projects.
Capital.
Right. Absolutely.
I feel confident that this will be made much more widely known in the next month.
But if people should know.
I think the point that Dennis made is...
Right or wrong, it's...
Right. The one thing is just a little disappointing is, this wasn't discussed more out in the open before last week, that it was really kind of done very quietly, with all good intentions, perhaps, but, and it's unfortunate that, you know, the reason why we're in the situation we're in is because of this. And again, it's going to benefit people in Hingham. It's just a question of whether it's the right approach, and again, not for us to decide, but just, I thought everyone should know kind of what the thinking was and what the numbers represent. And I think I've represented them accurately.
Do you want me to pry?
I don't know that we need to talk about it anymore. If I've said anything wrong, you can correct me, but otherwise, I don't think we need to...
I would just point out that there's a big increase in the taxes next year, and surprise that...
Probably a...
Yeah. No, it's a...
So it's mitigating an increase, it's not actually reducing any of the taxes.
Sure.
Mitigating a big increase that's going to happen next year, which if you look in your board having fun with your...
Right.
It's mitigating a big increase that's happening next year, that people were told about two years ago when they voted for it, that's going to be 40% less than what they were told it would be.
That's right.
It's going to smooth it, so we don't have a huge fight to talk, it's going to smooth it.
No.
And that is the goal.
Yeah. No, that's right, and that's right. They're both accurate, and I think the amount it smoothes it is pretty small overall, but I think what folks at home don't know is that, and we're talking about the big hit in fiscal '15 for taxes is the debt for the middle school project, for the most part. And the numbers weren't even changed for the town meeting when that was voted, because we already knew that the number was going to be less than was presented when those tax figures were calculated. And then once we got the bid, and it was two and a half million less, that even, you know, far reduced the tax impact to the town. What hopefully, I'll be able to share with the selectmen next month, and with the rest of the town, is that not only is the middle school almost two and a half million under the bid amount in the budget, but in addition to that, there was a 5% contingency, two and a half million dollars, of which only four, a little over $400,000 has been expended in change orders. That's .16% of the overall budget, and it's a remarkable amount. So you're talking about approximately four and a half million dollars under the budget that was approved at town meeting. So Dennis makes a fair point, that yes, while folks are expecting a hit, a spike in taxes in fiscal '15, it's 40% or more less than it was going to be then, and folks don't know that yet. They really don't know it widely. And I think, you know, this is a great idea, tax relief is a great idea. I think it needs to be shared with the public in context, in full context, and out in the open. And, you know, unfortunately, the way this has come out has been a little bit less than that. And I think it's going to be a benefit, I'm just not so sure it's the right approach in budgeting, but again, not for us to decide. So, anyway, with that, we have something to reconsider. I think we have, well...
Is everybody left on?
Yeah. Any other comments? I think Cal's going to make a motion, we can discuss further, but...
All right. I'm going to make a motion that we re-vote our previous budget vote for fiscal year '15 to $43,000...
Million.
I'm sorry. $43,400,423. I'm sorry, $43,490,722, along with a request to the administration to report back to us in May about how we might be able to best fund our staffing priorities and when we have more information in terms of enrollment and expenses and whatnot.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any further discussion? Liza?
I'd like to propose an amendment that we state that the total of $43,490,722 includes $35,924,118 in personnel costs and $7,566,604 in other expenses, the same as will be reported in the warrant.
I'll second that. What's the reason?
My reasoning is because in all of the discussions from the other committees, there was a concern about the number of personnel.
Yeah.
And that that's, personnel creates an ongoing budget for operating budget, and it's not a one-time cut or not cut. And so we are just being consistent with what is being shared with town meeting and that we can then, you know, follow up on the reports in May, consistent with, and whether we vote to change that or not, we can vote to change that or not.
I have a question for you then.
Yeah.
So are you saying that if our expense number was to change, you're suggesting we wouldn't use that money to fund any salaries? I'm not sure why the breakdown specifically.
Because we're just being clear and consistent with the recommendation from the advisory committee of the break of personnel and other expenses.
So, but if there was a shift in one section or the other?
So, I was just going to, important information kind of, okay?
Okay.
Is that I believe several years ago, advisory and the other town departments came to the conclusion that even though they would, they would list these separately, it was not a problem to move in between, move between in any of the departments. I know we have a statutory responsibility, and that's not an issue for us, but throughout the town, they've allowed them to move back between expenses and payroll. So if the objective is just to vote what in effect is going to be in the warrant, I wouldn't have any problem with that, with the understanding, to your point, Carol, that we can move it around should we see fit to do it differently in the future.
See, one, I don't think that's right. I think if the other departments want to move anything from salaries, across from salaries and expenses, they have to, they have to request, and it goes, have a conversation, it goes before...
Yeah, I don't think it's true anymore.
I believe it is.
Unless it change back.
I believe it is. In fact, I think this year, there, I think I was at a meeting or saw on the agenda about a certain request, and I heard discussion about a request to move something from one line item in the budget to another line item in the budget, and they had to go, and they could not do it on their own. I understand the point and consistency, I think it makes sense. I'm completely against it in principle. We have a statutory authority that no other department in this town has. We're an elected board that has responsibility over our own budget, and we don't have to go to anybody to ask whether we make a move from personnel salary to expenses back and It would, it would require us to come back in, to have a revote for the administration not to be able to act freely with an overall number, because there are fluctuations during the year, and they have to have the flexibility to react. The other departments, the largest of the other departments is 10% of what we are. They don't need to have the flexibility that we need to have. And I would suggest that it's a dangerous precedent to set, we've never done it in the past, there's never been a request to do it by any of the other boards, there's never been a need to do it, to specify the salary and expense lines. They are going to be set forth in the warrant, but the understanding from our side of the table is that, okay, that's what they are, but we have flexibility there, and that's statutorily empowered. So I don't see a need for it, and I couldn't support that.
When we took our last vote, we didn't do that.
No, we didn't. We've never done it in four years, in four budgets that I've looked at.
And I don't think advisory did either.
And I've never seen it done in the years before that. Andy?
So, just for clarification, Liza, you were reading the numbers off of this sheet here, right?
Yeah.
And why, just to refresh me, why are these numbers different than in here?
I'm not saying they are.
Well, the, I guess when I look at these things, it says salary and wages is 35.1, other expenses is 8.3. We got them here, 35.9 versus 7.5.
Right, but...
That's just a forecast.
Oh, that's just a forecast? Okay.
That's Ted's forecast that just came out last week.
All right, so, okay.
He ultimately is getting at our total budget anyways. Anybody doing a forecast is always getting at the school department's entire budget.
I think he just put a percentage to the two of those and that's why it's separated.
Okay, all right. Well, one thing...
If you, if you look at the bottom line, the bottom line number is correct.
Yeah, but I just didn't understand why one was the... So, Liza's spoken, I seconded her motion because I didn't really know exactly where it was going, but in reflection here, I do like the idea of transparency. And I think since we take so much time and effort, and Dr. Gallow just had that multicolor chart up there of the nine and a half, the 12 and a half, the 13 and a half, the three and a half, the one point said, is when you think of it this way, I think it will only bode well for the school committee in the future and always to continue work for transparency. So again, Liza mentioned this, I didn't really know exactly where it was going, but now sitting here, thinking what she's talking about, it just talked, just my two cents is, it just sounds very transparent.
So, Ray, I was just going to say that, you know, we just talked about in Carol's motion, and I think, I believe Eliza would agree, that, you know, we're going to hear back in May as to what's going to happen, you know, those numbers almost, I think, I'm not a betting man, but I would bet that those numbers will change between now and May.
They may change by the end of the week.
Right, exactly. So, all I'm, all I'm saying is if the, if it's going to be separated in the warrant, and if, it has to be stated in the warrant, to your point, Andy, it's a try, but I think we know that there's not a chance, I wouldn't want to swear on TV, but there's not a snowball's chance in hell that, you know, that those numbers are going to be probably what we do in May, and certainly not what it's going to be next year, so...
They're almost irrelevant. It's the total number that's the relevant number. Paul?
Just, I mean, I think I understand Liza's, Liza's point, but I couldn't disagree more with her, and I say it respectfully. I think transparency, I mean, we're on TV every, every time, we go through this whole budget process, we discussed with the education subcommittee for advisory, it's voted on. I couldn't imagine it being any more transparent than it is, and then in the, in the effect, probably not intended, it's going to handcuff our administration to be able to do things that are in the best interest of our children. And I say not intended, but I, I would, why would we take away that discretion or ability to make things better for our kids, just so we can show on a piece of paper that we think that these are the numbers, and we want to show people that these are the numbers, and we...
I don't get it, I just don't understand it. So I would be totally against it.
Well, in all due respect, I think we need to demonstrate that we heard what the advisory committee and the selectmen said about pick three out of six FTEs of new hires, and that we understand that concern, and so we respect that position, and that we are merely formally voting the breakdown as it will appear in the warrant, and that our vote is reflective of what we're presenting in the warrant. I think it's, yeah, we have the discretion to change it, I understand that. But I also think we need to make that statement loud and clear, not just discussions here, but even loud and clear to advisory committee that we heard them, we understand it. So, to me, it's not just semantics, and to me, it's that we are upholding what we've been asked to do, and we respect that, so...
Yeah, I mean, I would just respond to that, and perhaps others want to as well, that I understand advisory's need to delve into the particulars of how we staff, but it's not their role. And the fact that they chose to come back to us with a requested reduction of $150,000 is great. They characterized it with three FTEs giving us the ability to choose. Well, I appreciate that very much, and we can choose or not choose. We can find the savings of $150,000 and not make those cuts, and we're within our rights to do that. So I would suggest that advisory votes a number, and that's the only direction that they're permitted to give us under the law. Beyond that, we can move from one column to the other, we don't have to go to advisory or the selectmen or town meeting for that matter to do that. And that's state law that nobody else has, enjoys the benefit of. And I think folks forget that, and they don't acknowledge the fact that the school committee is an independent, elected, autonomous board which has that statutory authority, and no other department has. And it's very important to acknowledge that. It's very important. We spend months on this budget. Our administration spends hundreds and hundreds of hours preparing all of these presentations for us, for members of the public, for members of these boards. And I certainly respect the position of the advisory committee and the selectmen. I respect the fact that some may feel that certain positions that we've voted to fund do not qualify for level services in the way they choose to define it. Well, we didn't present a level services budget this year, we didn't really do it last year. At the end, we kind of gave in a little bit at the end and characterized a few positions because we tried to be a team player. Again, we tried to be a team player this year, but we asked for a little bit of deference and a little bit of understanding into how we're approaching budgeting. And I think Dot explained it very well in the joint meeting, that it's because you have to look at us differently, because we are just a different entity. And I think, and I think she explained that very well. So, I mean, I, I really think it takes a statutory authority out of our hand if we go ahead and vote that way. And I, and I would not, I would not support that.
I mean, the reality of it is, I think what we've heard last time, and, you know, piggybacking what Paul said about the adjustment counselors in particular, I think we've pretty much said as a group that that's prob, that's something that's going to be in the budget. So, again, as I said earlier, I think the advisory people grappled with this, tried to make the best sense they could, you know, to come up with a number they thought was fair in comparison with other departments and how the rest of the town is being treated. I think they would tell you that, hey, you know, if you decide that you want to put five more people in the budget and take it out of somewhere else, if that's what you feel is the best thing for the school department, that's what you should do. But you get $43,600, whatever the number is.
True.
So, you know, so in reality, since we don't know until May what's going to happen, I think it is a little dangerous to say, okay, we're committing to these numbers, unless we say we're committing to, we're willing to commit to those numbers because they're in the warrant, but you have to understand that we're not going to live by those numbers because we can't live by those numbers, so...
That mission, dude.
Yeah, I think if that's the reason, that doesn't make sense to do it, because the numbers are going to be in the warrant anyway, and it's really the bottom line, which is, is our concern. Paul?
One last thing, and I, I agree with you guys are saying, we have, we have a statutory authority, and what I'm hearing is, and I know it's not intended by any means by advisory, is that the amendment is going to basically say, if somebody tells me and us that we have to do something, oh, no, ask us to do something, we're going to do it because they ask us to do it. I look at me individually, I'm an elected official, and I'm going to do it, I think, as in the best interest of the people that elected me, looking out for the kids in the, in the, in the system. And no offense to anybody, but I'm not going to have somebody tell me to forget about my statutory authority and do what you want me to do, and I don't think that's happening, by the way, I don't. But I'm certainly think that that's, when I hear that we're asked to do something by an independent party, that we should just do it, that's not what I'm here for. And I don't, I don't think that's what it's intended, but I, nobody can tell us what to do, we have our own authority, and we, we exercise it.
Okay, so we have...
I'd like to finish since I started this. We may have statutory authority, but we all live in Hingham, and we should all respect that we're on the same team, and that we, there's one pie, and there should be a consistent way of operating within this town government. And that's why I proposed the amendment, is because we're all in this together, we're, we're not doing this on our own. So, I'm trying to be a team player with the whole town.
Yep.
That's why I proposed the amendment.
And frankly, I don't think, I don't think that by doing what, what I hope that we would do, that we would not be a team player. I think we've been a team player all along. I think the fact that we're considering this vote makes us a team player. We've done everything out in the open, on television, in public meetings, okay? What we just talked about in terms of tax relief was not all done out in the open in public meetings, and that's unfortunate.
I, that's not a...
And that's the truth.
...to run with me.
So, there's an amendment to the motion on the table. It's been seconded. Dot, just on the second?
Well, I was just going to say that I think that certainly my concern in suggesting that if you were to take this vote to reduce the bottom line, that you would add to it that we would come back to visit it, is exactly because last year, I think there was a lot of misunderstanding about what the vote was. I'm pretty sure I know what it was, because we had notes and, but I think people misunderstood it, and, and because we didn't come back to the table to explain, okay, we reduced the bottom line, but now this is exactly what we're doing. And I wanted to avoid that, so it was my thought about adding to the motion to reduce the bottom line. I will say, just to reassure people at home and anybody here, that it's certainly not our intent to go out and add five or six additional positions.
Of course, right.
But it certainly would be very much my intent to see whether or not it is possible to fund the things that you all voted...
Correct.
...at the meeting of the 24th with a reduced bottom line. So, and, and the place that we would look to do that is mainly at the personnel changes. And I say mainly because one of the things we always have to remember is that the allowance, for example, is counted in the personnel money, but it's not people, it's not additional people. So, so the idea is to get as close as we can to the budget that you all wanted to approve in terms of the things that are in it, if we can find some additional savings to be able to do that. It's not to add other things, it's not to go beyond what your original vote was, but simply to see whether or not we can get there, and if we can't, then to come back and say, you know what, respecting the fact that we know you want the adjustment counselors, but to come back and say, you know, we can't get there, and therefore, this is what we would recommend, and then just as you did when we made the last recommendation, you ultimately would have the final say, you say, we don't like that idea, we'd rather that you cut hexamiles.
So we have an amended motion on the table, it's been seconded, it's to characterize the amount separating into salary and expense lines. All those in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion is defeated. We come back to the main motion on the table, which has been seconded, which is to reduce the budget to the voted amount by advisory and selectmen, $43,497,22. Any further discussion?
And to...
Right.
Ask the administration to come back.
Report back, right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's good work.
Do you want to redo anything in regard to capital outlay?
I'll mention that next. Yeah, Liza?
I'd like to make another motion that our...
What's the issue? We're, we just finished...
I know.
Business.
Can I...
Why don't you tell me the nature of your motion?
Can, I was about to. I would like to recommend that the policy subcommittee review any of the, and any of the financial policies in the handbook.
No. Liza, I'm not going to entertain that motion. You're out of order. Not going to entertain it. Sorry.
If I, if I second the motion...
No, it's not a motion, I'm not going to entertain the motion. We'll take it up with the administration. We're not going to entertain the motion. It's not on the agenda, I don't know what it is you're discussing or asking about, not going to entertain the motion. know what it is you're discussing or asking about. Not going to entertain the motion. Okay, the capital budget. We don't have to act on the capital budget, but just to remind everybody, it was originally approved at 698, 674, and that a decision was made to put off the fire department alarm box monitoring, which had been planned in a phased way for this coming fiscal year to the next fiscal year. The $50,000 that was in capital for us to do our buildings has been taken out, and they're putting it into one pool of money townwide to approach that in the next fiscal year. So, our number of bottom line has been reduced to 648, 674. We don't need to vote that. That is what it is. And pleased to have that amount. Moving on to, any questions on capital? Moving on to 8.4. This is an annual waiver that we've done except for last year for an ultimate frisbee tournament that they typically have in early August. We didn't have it last year because of the construction of the high school fields. So, we need to vote on this, correct?
That's correct, because there is policy that says on Sundays in the summer...
That's right.
Groups would have to be Hingham groups, or mainly Hingham participants, and this is a wider, more regional group.
Okay. Could I have a motion, please, to approve the request of the ultimate frisbee tournament?
I'll make a motion to approve the request of the ultimate frisbee tournament. I believe they raised money for the Special Olympics. Am I correct?
Beyond their expenses, yeah.
Beyond their expenses.
They do, and they also do pay a fee for the use of the field.
Absolutely.
So, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we have an appointment. Welcome. Couple of resignations. I think...
He's a part of the...
Both renewed, right?
Take a look.
A few resignations. Salary advancement that's left over from February. Congratulations. Any other 48-hour items? Okay. Anything new on subcommittees? Any recent meetings?
I was just going to say that policy's going to get together again. We have ongoing work. So, I'll call you guys tomorrow and set some dates up.
What is it you're discussing in policy?
Well, we have stuff that we've had on our agenda, which we haven't gone to. And it's also time of the year to review our pre-K and KIA's.
Well, I don't think we need policy to do that. There was a suggestion by the administration, I think, that came across today, and I don't think it needs a review by the policy subcommittee.
A lot of thoughts goes into this. For the last four years I've been on policy, where the things, you know, so anyways, we have, policy has things to talk about.
Okay, but Andy, policy isn't going to take up the KIA and pre-K. I don't think it needs to be done in policy. So if there's something that we want to discuss now, based on the memo that Dot sent out today...
We reviewed the fees there every year.
Right.
And made a recommendation.
Right. Do you have the memo that Dot sent today?
Yeah, I got it today after 5 o'clock.
I didn't have a chance to review the memo.
So, so it was, you know, I get this thing here right now, and I review it. Okay. The suggestion is, should we start to meet? And it's usually better for us to meet than just bring something on here.
Well, I think...
And also, I think, and also, we've started some work on the Fields project, but there's still things we need to iron out.
Like what?
Well, we've done, right, we've done...
My understanding is that we voted...
We've done the pilot program.
Well, it's in place, and it's going to be for the spring.
Right. And then, there's, there's a lot, when you start putting together all these things, there's a lot of things. And we tried, just kept on moving forward. We were under a little time pressure, and, you know, we can go, and we can adjourn the meeting, but it seems to me there's probably like things to do in policy.
Okay, but we're not just making up things to discuss. The school committee has to, either you get direction from the full school committee, or you get direction from...
One thing we haven't done is, we also started...
We're going to review the whole policy.
Right, so, okay. So, I mean, that's why we've continued to never get to that. So, when I say there's stuff that, we've had, whatever word we use tonight, unfinished business, we have unfinished business.
I mean, I'm sympathetic to what Andy's saying. I did get, we did get this earlier today. I don't believe that there's going to be a whole lot, I think we spent a lot of time on it last year, and it's probably going to be fine, but, you know, I think we ought to hear what John has to say.
Well, my intent certainly was never that we would act on this tonight. It was really a question that, for many years, fee structures never came to the school committee. In the more recent past, fee structures have come. And I had thought that we were trying to move to a direction where we got a structure in place, where then the increases each year could be more automatic. So, my question really was, given the amount of time we spent on these two particular ones last year, are we at that point where we can go with something automatic or not? And then I said, if we are, then we would put this on the agenda for the next time. If we're not at that point and need to have a meeting, then we need to schedule it so that it could be on the agenda for the next time, which means schedule in the next two weeks. But there certainly was not the intent that I would give you something that I expected you to act on tonight.
And as I say, I don't know that this is a major, ends up being a major discussion, but we did spend a lot of time on it. I'd be interested to hear how things went this year, how it looks in terms of what the finances came through based on what we did last year, which was a fairly significant revision. And then, if it appears to be working right, then we say, fine. It'll probably just need to go up 2.5% or whatever. The only other thing that I can think of, and John has, I'm sure will have the information, is we've gone through this thing about the healthcare expenses, and to make sure that we're moving in the direction of offsetting that, and whether that needs to be more, whether that's 2.5% or 3%, or whether we're getting there fine the way it is. So, that's, I would personally feel more, about Carol, I would feel more comfortable taking a look at it if we spent hopefully no more than 20 minutes to a half an hour talking about it and getting the information, and then have a, you know, a recommendation to the school committee, I think. And I think Andy's right. We have had on our agenda this timetable for going through the policy manual a lot of time.
Keep putting it off. Not that we put it off. We don't get to it because we run out of time.
And we also try to be efficient. We meet at 7:30 in the morning to get 9:00, to work around the administration's times, keep them there till 10:00 tonight.
Right, but it, right, and that's fine.
And then we meet at 8 o'clock.
It may be that, you know, it may be that you plan a meeting...
8 o'clock.
8 o'clock.
It may be that you plan a meeting, and you have on your agenda, okay, we're going to look at the policy, and then you assign members of the committee homework, right? They go through and they review a particular section of the policy manual, and they come back with a request.
We've never even had a chance to get to that.
What I'm suggesting is, that's maybe a way to proceed, so you can, so you don't have to worry about 7:30 meetings.
Exactly. That item has been on the agenda.
Yeah, you know, we haven't even gotten to the point of discussing, yeah. So, I mean, when Carol was chair last year, we decided.
We did. Talked about it, never got to it.
Right.
Because we had other, bigger policy issues to be...
You know, I mean, just, you know, listen, you know, you're being a little aggressive on like saying, why do we have to meet? The policy that we just finalized tonight took well over four hours to finally get through everything. So, in terms of meeting with all of us. So, when you think about something that I would think is pretty straightforward, employment harassment on a student, because we already had a template for student-on-student, but it at least took four hours between being in the meetings, between a couple of readings, having an open meeting, having people come in. Unfortunately, it just doesn't move that quickly. We'd like to, but it doesn't.
I'd like to give an update on the community outreach.
Yes, okay.
I visited with Hingham High School last week, PTO, and I'm going to PRS, actually, on Wednesday morning. Liza, do you know?
I have the middle school and foster next week.
And Ed is going to East and to South in the next couple of weeks. So, kind of updating them on budget and what's happening. Certainly at Hingham High School, when I was there, people were very interested in knowing about the Fields project, and about the budget, about, you know, some of the new mandates. So, anyway, it was good conversation. Wish there were more people there, but we had lots of great questions, so it turned out well. Also, Hingham Meg, since I'm the rep, I'd like to just announce that the FET, their new event, is sold out for 4/14, so it should be quite the event. It's going to be at SoShore Country Club, and it's a first, it's moving in a different direction for fundraising. Should be really interesting. It'll be a fun night.
That's great. Thank you.
So, just very quickly, on long-range planning, one of the things I talked to Ray about is that to have long-range planning, kind of take responsibility for our planning, our annual planning sessions. And it was kind of a problem last year, where we got all the way into October doing that. So, it'd be my intention, we can either meet, you know, after the budgets get all finalized, there may be a window to just talk about that in the subcommittee level, or we can wait until May. But I would think maybe if there's a time, you know, I can send something out, maybe in early April, just to talk about what we might want to do, and try to get something scheduled in the summer, and how much we want to cover, whether it can be done in, you know, one, three-hour session, whether it makes sense to look at other things as well. So, I'll contact you guys and see if we can come up with a time to do that, so we can get it on everybody's calendar, hopefully sometime in June or July or whatever, at least to start the process. And then we have to meet a second time in the fall. That would work out well.
Okay. No executive session tonight?
No.
Just nothing else? Take a motion, Andy?
How many days have we missed? What are we into?
Three.
Three, so we're already into the Monday?
The 19th.
I'm not sure what...
School year. How many school days have we missed?
Oh, three. Three, and the date that school would end at this point is June 19th, assuming nothing bad happens this week. So, yes, three days.
Sorry, Ray, I just wanted to...
Yeah, that's fine.
For students, teachers do one additional thing.
Thursday is the 19th.
Okay, yeah. So, we got one more day.
You know, John, we should announce that we did make an appointment this week of our new transportation supervisor.
Yeah, we had a great interview process. We actually ended up surprisingly getting, you know, some very strong candidates in the pool. We interviewed about eight people, and we ultimately selected an internal candidate, Patrick Cunningham, as the new transportation supervisor. Patrick will start training with Marion March 24th and take over the reins on March 31st.
What's his name again? I'm sorry.
Patrick. It's Patrick Cunningham.
Cunningham, okay.
But it's Patreg.
He's one of the drivers.
Yes, he's one of the drivers.
He lives in town, got kids in the schools.
Yep, right.
He's a favorite. He's a favorite of the kids. He's a good guy.
That's on the negotiation table.
Okay.
Great.
Great.
Yeah, so we're, you know, encouraged, and I think we're going to be in great shape.
Good.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 617, new transportation supervisor.